Jason.
Welcome to the August 9, 2010 Work Sessions. Work Sessions are more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on Work Session items. Tonight there are four agenda items. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk's staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Will the clerk please sign the agenda item?
First item is Discussion of North Fulton Transportation Plan. This is being presented by Christina Pastor of Kimbley Horn and Associates.
I think I might even have to borrow a councilperson's honor, Bailey's reading glasses, for this tonight.
They look really good on you.
I do apologize. I was thinking you guys were going to be on the floor, but the good news is, a lot of this information is, actually, most of this information is in the council packets that you've received.
All right, well, great.
Well, thank you all very much. Very, I know all of you, with the exception of Councilman McGarry, have had a chance to work with Kimbley Horn and myself before, so, welcome to the insanity that is transportation planning in North Fulton. As you remember, we finished up Milton's transportation plan last year, and we were really well set for starting the North Fulton Transportation Plan. So, the projects that came out of the Milton Transportation Plan helped to feed into the project that we're working on now. And the six cities, five, the five largest cities plus mountain park in North Fulton, came together to help fund this project. And the reason that we're doing this, actually, North Fulton is really unique in that it's completely incorporated, there's no more unincorporated Fulton County, which is actually still quite different than in South Fulton. And this was an opportunity, everybody is doing their own transportation plans, and a lot of times, it's really easy to do your transportation and look inside your boundaries, but not necessarily to look outside. And as we know, traffic and congestion and mobility doesn't know quarters, doesn't know boundaries. And so, the reason that we're doing this project is for all the cities to work together, to come up with a list of projects that are regionally significant, that North Fulton can put to ARC and say, "These are the projects that are most important to us, and we stand behind them as an entire region and not just as individual cities." So, we've been working on this project since the end of August last year, so, almost a year now. And we've made a lot of great progress, and some of you have been at the charrettes that we've worked on. But now, we're coming to all the councils to present our preliminary recommendations. And the purpose of tonight, as you know, we're not asking for a vote, but we're asking for some comment and some feedback on the projects that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. So, if you can bear with me, there's some small text, with some information to kind of get you up to speed on where we are and what we've been doing.
Do any of those, does that have some mates in this small paper that we have that we might could follow along?
Yes. The vision and goals are actually a couple pages into the, the document that you have in hand is a summary of, you don't have to read that now, it's for your own reading pleasure when you want to fall asleep later, if you want to take a look. But there's the vision and goals, and that's, we set those out early on in the process. The timeline is also outlined in your packet, and we'll talk through that, and then, the maps are also included.
All right, that just may help us follow along a little bit better.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, first, first thing I want to talk about is the vision and goals, and you can, you don't need to read through all of that, but really, what we did was take the vision and goals from all of the different jurisdictions and kind of meld them into one vision for North Fulton. And there's a lot of list going on, but it's talking about mobility and accessibility, it's talking about preserving the character of the individual jurisdictions. We don't, we believe and we understand that every city in North Fulton has a different character, and I would say Milton is probably one of the most unique of any of the cities. And so, we're not attempting to change the character or to just apply transportation recommendations, the same transportation recommendations in Milton that we would elsewhere. So, keeping that in mind, the vision and goals has helped us to give some guidance to the project, and also, in choosing recommendations, those help to give some guidance in what we call our evaluation criteria. In terms of who has been involved in this process, it's actually been a large group of people. Carter and Sarah have been involved from the very beginning and are thoroughly enjoying working with us, I am sure. But our project management team is who we worked, we were closest with, that's the staff representatives from each of the jurisdictions. We also have a stakeholder committee, they're representatives of you, basically. I believe Matt is on from Milton, and Clyde hasn't been able to come to some. But, so, I mean, we have representatives from Milton who come and join with the rest of the stakeholder committee. And in the policy committee, we've met with the mayors, both at the North Fulton Mayor's meeting, as well as individually, to talk to them about project recommendations and some of their feedback. In addition to those three tiers, we're also working with members of the public through the charrettes, emails, phone calls, any information that they want to provide to us. Everything is on ARC's website, and so, they have the opportunity to provide feedback to us. We've been working with adjacent cities and counties to get their information, to hear about what they're doing, what is Forsyth County doing, what is Cherokee doing, so, talking to them, so we can coordinate not only within North Fulton, but also with our neighbors outside of North Fulton. And then, once, once again, as I said, we're coming to the city councils for feedback, and eventually, we will be asking for your approval on this plan. In terms of what we've done already, and this is what the timeline kind of breaks out, we've done quite a bit. We've had an existing conditions report, a needs assessment report, that's where we do a lot of the numbers, the digging, the writing. It's not really fun for anybody outside of the consultant team, I think, except for getting to hear about what are the, what does the public see as some of the problems? What are the deficiencies? Where, where do we need to target our efforts? We did a public opinion poll, 1,000 residents throughout North Fulton, weighted by the number of residents per jurisdiction. We've done two, two charrettes. The first was needs, understanding what is, what are the needs in Milton, what are the needs in North Fulton. And then, the second was a recommendation charrette. We came back and we said, "Here's a preliminary list of projects. Give us your feedback on these projects." And we had everybody vote using red dots and green dots as to whether or not they, Karen's laughing because she likes that much. And so, that gave us-
You limit the number of red dots and green dots.
We did, we did, because we did not, and when we did this with the stakeholder committee at first, there was, there was a little bit of persuasion going on, and trying to get everybody to put red dots on things and green dots on others. So, we had to kind of reel everybody in a little bit. But that helped us to give us some idea of projects that were of interest to the public and other ones that people really didn't want to see happen. So, we've met with the mayors multiple times, we've met with other stakeholders like MARTA and the Chattahoochee River Keeper and other, other outside stakeholders that may not be directly involved. We done, we've done a relatively thorough cost, technical and cost evaluation, and we spent an entire day working with the project management team. Once we developed all of our tools, we sat down with the project management team for a day to prioritize projects. Next steps. Well, here we are tonight. We're going to be meeting with each of the councils. Alpharetta was last week, we have Milton and Roswell tonight, and then, next week, we've got Johns Creek and Zini Springs. Following those, our goal is to have feedback from each of the councils on projects that are, well, hopefully, we'd love for everybody to just love the projects, but we recognize that's probably not going to be the case. So, we want feedback from all of the councils. Following that last meeting, we're going to be going to the North Fulton Mayors on Thursday morning, August 19. And ideally, we're going to be presenting the list of recommendations to them after we've had feedback from all of the different councils. We're planning to finish the report in late September, and we're going to be doing our final presentation in which we present all of the project deliverables in the end of September also. So, we are rapidly approaching the end. In terms of picking the project list, I won't go into great detail, but people have asked us, "How do you come up with the project list?" We didn't just necessarily go out and talk to people, there was multiple sources of information that we used to develop that. We did a thorough analysis of, in our needs assessment, we ran ARC's model and looked at where some of the projects, we looked at in 2030, absolutely nothing with transportation. What happens? Where are the roads failing, where are the roads failing even worse than they are now? We looked at all the previous CTPs, which Milton's was a little bit easy, because we already knew what all the recommendations were, but we had to look at the rest of the CTPs that had been done, and all the different transportation studies that had been done by some of the cities. We also looked at what's in the existing regional transportation plan and in the TIP. And then, we also got information from the charrettes and from the stakeholders and public officials. So, that's how we developed our very first list, but it was a really long list. In terms of prioritizing projects, that was, that was where the more technical end of things came in. We had an evaluation matrix where we actually took a lot of our vision and goals and put them into 100-point scale. So, are we creating new connections? Are we enhancing bike, ped and transit instead of just road lightnings? Are we maintaining the character of the area, or are we trying to put a six-lane freeway through a downtown? All of those types of things went into that matrix. We looked at costs and operations and maintenance costs also. We looked at the potential benefits due to congestion reduction, those were mostly for roadway projects. We looked at how easy would it be to construct a project, we've got some river crossings in there. Those are extremely difficult when you consider taking out, crossing a major environmental feature and then taking out a lot of property. So, those types of things, we thought about. Public input, and then, how many of those projects were already in the TIP and the RTP, because we already know that there's some sort of public support for those. So, that's the process by which we went through, and none of those tools, one, no one tool forced any project in or out. It was a combination of them, and at that point in time, it was a very qualitative process, talking about the pros and cons of each of the different projects. So, to get started, the first list of projects, and this is, this is not a tier of projects, it's a little confusing, but these are multi-county projects. The reason these are separate, and I'll talk a little bit more, is funding. We have three tiers of projects that come after this, and the reason these are separated are, these are projects for which we don't, we as North Fulton, don't really have a lot to do with the funding of it. Everything else, we've tried to be very fiscally constrained in our prioritization of projects. And these projects are well outside of what we're going to be funding or operating for that matter. So, in terms of some of the projects- Is that okay? What's that voice?
You can take it off of it.
Transportation planning rock star. Okay, so, in terms of transit recommendations, that's the dash line, and like I said, the maps are the 11x17 foldouts that are in your packets, if you want a closer view without having to put your glasses on. So, we've got some cross, one of the things we did here was a lot of cross-regional connectivity from a transit perspective. We're lacking a lot of transit in North Fulton, and so, a lot of our projects actually mirror what was in Concept 3, which was the very large transit study that was done by ARC and MARTA and one of their offshoot organizations. So, we've got some reworking of some MARTA routes through here, and then, also, some express bus along the State Bridge, Old Milton, Rucker, Arnold Mill corridor. Now, that doesn't, it also goes down State Route 9. So, we've got some transit routes here, where they begin and end isn't really up to us to exactly determine. Additionally, we have transit on 400 and 285. What that transit looks like, it could be bus, it could be rail. One of the things that we are going to recommend as part of this project is that the transit recommendation in 400 probably needs to be phased. In the, in the short term, we're going to be actually working on the study of the managed lane corridor on 400 and looking at what our options are for, is it two, you know, two lanes in each direction, is it reversible lanes? We're, we're going to be working with GDOT to figure that out. And there's the Revive 285 study that's going on right now. So, a lot of that is going to get determined through those projects. And these projects, 400 in particular, is probably going to be a public-private partnership where the funding is coming from somewhere well outside of North Fulton, or at least the majority of it. So, in terms of transit recommendations, when those, if those managed lanes are able to go in, chances are, what we're going to see first is express bus routes running up and down those. Unfortunately, right now, heavy rail is a massive investment, financial investment, and a lot of the land use in North Fulton is very spread out, and so, there isn't really the, the density of land use and people to support an extension that could be $1.5 billion, $2 billion if not more. MARTA has stated that this would be a light rail extension. We're leaving, we're leaving that out there for somebody else to determine, but what we're, we're recommending is it's probably going to be phased, starting with buses in managed lanes, and then, as time goes on, if land uses change, if there's a little more density around the 400 corridor, we might be able to see some sort of a rail investment, light or heavy. Same thing with 285, but a lot of that is going to get decided with the Revive 285 study. So, those are the projects that are, like I said, outside of, they're, they're projects that we're supporting, but they're not in our funding tiers because they're a little beyond what we're going to be working. Now, in terms of funding, the only funding source that we have as of today is the money that we have in the regional transportation plan or in the, in the TIP. That's really the only money. ARC is in the process of doing Plan 2040 right now, that's their regional plan update. The only money they are allowed to assume is the money that comes to us from the feds as part of that plan. We all know that there's the regional TSPLOST that's out there for discussion and is getting a lot of heated debate right now. There's also other opportunities for new trend, new funding sources. It could be a local TSPLOST, it could be an expansion of the CIDs, we've got a couple of them now, can we expand those maybe some? It could be new sales taxes and property taxes, it could be any of those. We've looked at a number of different funding sources, but really, all we have in guaranteed right now is what we get in the RTP. So, we used our funding sources to use, to break down our thresholds, to give us, because we didn't want it just a big, long list of projects, but we didn't want to list every single project and, and argue over, "Well, this project should be first, and that project should be second," or vice versa. So, what we did was break them down into three major tiers. The first are our top, our top tier, and what we've done is allot the same amount of money that's in our current RTP, which is about 500, a little over $500 million, to that first tier, and that gave us our first break. The second break is about the same size as the, as the first one, but what we're assuming is those are all other funding sources that could come either from the regional TSPLOST or from another funding source, but it's some other additional funding source that is not guaranteed at this time. And then, Tier 3 is other good projects that we support, but we have absolutely no idea where the money could come from. It's kind of our aspirations plan that ARC has, so. Now for the fun. Hmm? Flip, please. Vanna, would you mind flipping boards?
Kirk and Mick.
I was Vanna last week in Alpharetta for Ed, so. So, the first tier, the, the projects in red, and I'm just going to talk about the projects that fall within or are of special interest to Milton. We can talk about any of the projects that you want to talk about, but I'm guessing that most of what you want to talk about is, we can flip the last one, too. This says everything on it. Trying to conserve the boards. All right. You can't really tell on here, but you'll be able to tell on your packets. The, the double line are bike, ped projects, and the solid line are vehicular projects. And the numbering that's on the maps is associated with the project list that you will also find in your council briefing packet. The, the biggest bike, ped project that's in Tier 1 for Milton is actually something that was brought to us by Carter, and our, our all-day planning session was looking for an opportunity to get Milton residents to the Big Creek Greenway Extension. So, as you can see, Project 112, here's the Big Creek Greenway Extension. Alpharetta's beginning the construction of this already, and then, the rest of it is tying all the way up to Forsyth County. Project 112 ties from State Route 9 across McGinnis, well, roughly, that doesn't mean it has to run along the road, somewhere in that vicinity, and tying in to this extension. You'll see Johns Creek actually did this also. It was actually, I thought, a kind of heartwarming moment. It's really what the plan is all about, and it was great to see, Carter actually was the first one to talk about it, and then Cindy Jenkins from Johns Creek came over, and it was, it was really the cities working together to find opportunities to share a resource like the Big Creek Greenway that a lot of times, residents don't have access to because there's not a safe way to get there. And so, that's what these projects are trying to do, and it's, it was really a great opportunity for everybody to work together, to come up with, with being able to, to share a great resource that Alpharetta has right now. So, that's, that's the, oh, that's good. So, that's the Bike Ped Project, and that's a brand-new project. The roadway projects should actually look relatively familiar, because they came out of the Milton Transportation Plan. Project 307 is the widening of Arnold Mill Road. Ideally, that would go well into Cherokee County, and Cherokee County's been very interested in this project for many years. So, I think they would be on board with, with that widening. Now, something a little bit different than the plan, Project 308, we had proposed in Milton's Transportation Plan to widen Rucker Road. Well, we've come up with a compromise that was actually Ed Ellis, who is vacationing in Canada right now, while we're doing city council meetings for him. Ed was working with Mayor Wood and Mayor Luchus on coming up with a compromise, because Alpharetta wanted to see Howes Road and Roswell widened, and Roswell wanted to see Rucker and Alpharetta widened. And so, what we did was come up with a compromise plan in which we're not actually going to widen either of the roads to a four-lane facility, but there, we're going to put in a bioswol median with turn lanes and intersection improvements to improve the capacity on the road now, but not to necessarily widen it to a full four-lane facility, because we'd probably have some right-of-way, more major right-of-way impacts. And so, we're doing that on both Howes and Rucker to share the burden of the additional traffic. We're actually doing the same thing over on Hardscrabble, and that was a good project for, for Roswell also. So, that's, that's, it's a little bit different than what was in the plan, but we think it's a good compromise. Project 306, you'll also know is familiar, this is the widening of State Route 9 up into Forsyth County. Alpharetta's very excited about this project also, and so, that one is in our, our top tier. The only other project is the widening of Winward. Project 323, all the way from Deerfield over to Union Hill, I believe. So, those are all of the projects in Tier 1. Questions? If you want, just keep going, and then, we can talk about all of them.
Probably just continue on, and then, we'll have any follow-up comments.
All right. Our Tier 2 projects, we've actually only got one in Tier 2, and that's bike, ped improvements all along State Route 9 and or Westside Parkway, ideally, from the Fulton County-Forsyth border all the way down to the City of Atlanta. What that exactly looks like, we're not really sure at this point, especially as you get into Zini Springs, State Route 9 becomes a very, very interesting roadway to navigate. And so, this would require a lot more study, but the, the concept is there, and some of it is there on, on Westside Parkway right now, we've got some wider sidewalks that could serve as multi-use paths. So, a lot of that is just being able to provide a north-south facility on the west side of 400 that would mirror some of what's happening with the Big Creek Greenway on the east side. And then, the last project in Tier 3 is Project 334, this is also from the plan, but the widening of Hamby and Hopeville up into Cherokee County. So, those are all of the projects that are specifically related to Milton, and you, at this board here, these are all of the projects together. And the reason for putting this is to show the network and how everything works together, because when you see it broken down into tiers, you don't necessarily always see that connectivity. But when you look here, you can see how a lot of these projects play off of and complement each other. In terms of other recommendations that we'll be working on that are not projects, we're going to be looking at things like transportation demand management strategies, maybe that involves the schools. We always know the schools are a little bit hard to sometimes work with, because they operate in their own, their own world, so sometimes, you know, working with the schools is difficult. Doing access management along the three major corridors, which is State Route 9, Holcombe Bridge and Crossville, and then, this Arnold Mill to Rucker, Old Milton State Bridge, that quarter. So, recommending studies for access management, because some of the quarters are really in need of an access management overhaul. And then, looking at things like bike, ped level of service in activity centers versus outside of activity centers. And then, also, talking about ATMS, the signal timing and coordination and working, some of the cities are already doing that, especially on specific quarters like State Route 9, but maybe taking a broader look at the cities overall in coordination between them. So, those are going to be some other recommendations that we're going to be putting forth in the plan. But I think tonight, the biggest reason that I'm here is to get some feedback on the project list, if you have any heartburn or any, anything that you want to talk about relative to the project list, so that we can narrow and come to consensus prior to that August 19 Mayor's meeting. And if tonight, if you're not ready to talk about it tonight, I think as long as we can get some feedback from you prior to that meeting, that would be extremely helpful.
Thank you very much, and just looking at the, the last map, the all recommend, recommendations of all projects, I think, you know, what we learned in our, not that it was earth-shattering, I don't think, but in our plan was that if we can get some of that through traffic out of central Milton, and these recommend, you know, this last map shows that we're, some of the things that we would be benefiting, benefiting from would be getting it on the east-west side, so we're not, we're not shoving stuff right through the, the central part of the city. So, if anybody has any comments or questions, I know it's a lot to, to take in right now, but if you have any questions, it's probably prudent to ask them now, otherwise, we probably need some feedback before the 19th meeting. Does anybody have anything, or? Go ahead, Bill Lusk.
On your Tier 1 project, it looks like you're doing the McGinnis Ferry Road.
Yes, only to Union.
Is it only to 400, or between 400 and?
No. One of the projects that is not in this list, and, and the reason, the reason is, is the new interchange. We recognize that's got a life of its own. And when you did the modeling of it, it doesn't, there isn't a lot that it does in terms of relieving traffic. It helps to relieve Winward and McCarlin, but it's not, it's not a major traffic improvement, because all you're doing is diverting a lot of traffic from the two other interchanges. But I think it's more so an economic development engine. And so, that project is something that we recognize is moving on its own, and probably doesn't need the support of this project, and we don't feel from a transportation perspective that it would, it ranks as high, highly as some of the other ones do. But if that project were to be done, then the widening of McGinnis from Union Hill over to Morris and down Morris would, would end up going through, but you don't necessarily need it as much if the interchange doesn't go through. So, it would stop at Union Hill.
Thank you. Counselperson's honor, Bailey, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pretten. In terms of the projects, is it, should, I don't want to assume, are they based on priority or in Tier 1? It's not based on priority?
Tier 1, anything in Tier 1 is of equal priority.
Okay.
That, we didn't want to get into-
That was going to be one comment, because we'd like that connectivity, obviously, perhaps, sooner than later, in terms of the Greenway.
In terms of order, I will say, the one, the one set of projects that we think needs, requires an order is the Howes and Rucker. These improvements need to be made before the widening. Just because if we widen this, and also, we attract a lot of traffic, or they did bottleneck here, it's not really going to be very much good. So, in terms of order, that's the only one that these would really need to happen first, but we're already talking about them as projects. So, they would really ideally go together.
In, in talking about Rucker and Howes, knowing that that is indeed a bottleneck, when you talk about capacity improvements versus four-laning them, do you have a sense, or can you share with us tonight, how you envision those capacity improvements paralleling with time frames? In other words, do you anticipate that enhanced capacity to be good for 15 years, 10 years, five years, Tark?
I mean, to be completely honest, chances are those, the problem, the difficulty is, is that the compromise isn't from a, just a pure capacity standpoint, it, it's not going to be, it's not enough to, to make both of them operate wonderfully. But what we have heard a lot on both of those roads, we don't have any turn lanes on those roads, and so, every time, it's the same thing that we experienced with Crappup, every time, you've got a left turner sitting there, you're, you're building up a queue right behind you. So, to say that they'll last to 20 feet is probably unlikely, because they're really not, from a capacity standpoint, what you would really need. But one of the great things also about all of the road widening projects that we're talking about, we're recommending that in some way, shape or form, a bike and pedestrian recommendations are considered also. So, whether that means bike lanes or a side path, that would require some studying when you actually did the concept work, but in addition to then getting capacity improvements and access improvements, you would also be getting bicycle and pedestrian improvements with it.
And hopefully, that would be at the same time.
All at the same time.
Right.
And actually, I forgot to also mention, at the very back of your packets are fact sheets, and they are the, they're a little more detailed information on each of the projects in Tier 1 that are of interest to Milton. So, the projects that I reviewed on, on the Tier 1, so it gives you a little bit of an idea on what those might look like, and it's, all of that would be subject to whatever variation would come when you actually do the concept work, but in some cases, your median might not be 20 feet, it might only be 10. So, a lot of that will change based on right-of-way constraints and things like that.
And that's a great segue, because my next question had to do with whether or not the design had really already been defined, in particular, as it relates to character. We've all, obviously, been part of these charrettes, et cetera, and one of the big things we continue to hear from citizens is that when there's a road improvement project, that we obviously want it to fit within the character, we want to improve capacity, but we still want it to-
Exactly.
-look like Milton. And even on a road widening as significant as Arnold Mill, and it is helpful to have that visual, I'm assuming, that there will be a lot more input in terms of how that would evolve.
This is a 30,000-foot study, and the number of projects that we're looking at, we couldn't possibly get into that level of detail. So, when those projects were moved forward to design, to concept phase and design, then
to hear from citizens is that when there's a road improvement project, that we obviously want it to fit within the character. We want to improve capacity, but we still want it to look like Milton. And even on a road widening as significant as Arnold Mill, and it is helpful to have that visual, I'm assuming that there will be a lot more input in terms of how that would evolve.
This is a 30,000-foot study, and the number of projects that we're looking at, we couldn't possibly get into that level of detail. So when those projects were moved forward to design, to concept phase and design, then you would start to look at, you know, the, how wide does the median need to be? Do we really need as wide of a sidewalk here because there's not going to be as many people as five foot, and now we don't need 10 foot? All of that will be working out. And actually, one of the things with Arnold Mill that we've noticed, it's so windy. One of the things that you might be able to do, depending on how right-of-way works, is actually straighten the road out a little bit and widen on one side and widen on another to maybe make it a little less windy. Some of the things that we saw doing Milton's transportation plan was that some of the roads are a little bit too windy for their design speeds or for the speeds.
Some windy is okay, but maybe not too much.
Right, right, exactly.
Nice back.
So you have an opportunity to maybe fix the alignment a little bit, too, so it's a little straighter.
And I know that timeframe, it's hard to predict, but do you have, so when we get those phone calls that say, okay, so how soon might we see some of these projects actually beginning? Any discussions yet?
Well, the Tier One, we've given ARC, ARC is in the process of testing projects right now for Plan 2040, and that is not going to be made, and the decision for that is not going to be made until next year. But what we've done is put forth our preliminary recommendations, given the time constraints that we have. And so these are the projects that North Fulton wants to see move forward. Whether or not those make it into the plan, we've tried to make our evaluation criteria and our selection process as similar to what ARC does, what GDOT does. But the problem is, they've been figuring out what they're using for criteria as we've been selecting projects. But our project manager at ARC is the same, she's also the project manager for Plan 2040, Regan Hammond. So she's been helping us to make sure that we're not choosing things. They're going in a much more connectivity, mobility direction instead of pure congestion relief. And so we think a lot of what we've selected projects on will also work well in their process. So part of it will be depending on how they get into, if they get into RTP and TIP. Beyond that, the biggest question is funding and how fast the cities want to move. We're going to be putting together a five-year action plan and then a 20-year policy plan. I think a lot of that is getting those projects ready. If the T-S clause were to go through, one of the things we've heard is the projects that are ready to go might fare better in terms of getting funding. And so any projects that have their design and environmental done and are just sitting on the shelf ready to go will probably, or could potentially have an opportunity to get funding faster than the ones that are just an idea in somebody's mind. So, but it's so, it's still really for our.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Karen.
Several of these projects are projects that the state DOT supposedly already has in their line for the next 30 years or whenever they're going to get around to them. How is all that coordinated with the state DOT and what funds they supposedly set aside for like Arnold Mill, Highway 9? Because I know both of those are projects that are on their plans.
Well, the first thing is actually the regional process. And what we've heard from ARC is just because a project is in the regional transportation plan now through 2030 doesn't guarantee that it's going to be there in the Plan 2040. So everything is up for debate, except for the projects that are in the TIP that are already moving, have design work done and already have legs on them. Everything else is up for consideration. So what we've tried to do is, and that's one of the things that we looked at, was is this project in the TIP and RTP already in some form or fashion? Now, House is in there as a four-lane facility, and we're recommending it as a two-lane with a median. So some projects actually have changed character a little bit, but I think if they're already in there, that does help with that guarantee. So all of that will be up for consideration with Plan 2040.
Is that all you have, Karen?
Yeah.
Bill, you got it?
Hopefully they'll stay in there, because it's hard to explain to these citizens that we've been saying for years and years that it's on the DOT's plans that they would suddenly.
I keep saying, but 30 years ago, I think.
They suddenly now have been removed, so.
Well, and the other, the reason, the whole reason for doing this plan was to try to find those really great regional projects. The more regional the project, it's going to be a lot easier to get a major corridor project in that you have three cities in agreement on than maybe an intersection project that, it might be a smaller, taller amount, but it doesn't have that regional significance. So that's one of the great things about this project and the plans that we're putting forth, are these projects are all of regional significance or in combination with each other. And so we're, one of the things we're planning to see is that these projects are going to fare well in the regional selection of projects.
All right. Well, I think that was, everybody had their comments, so thank you very much for your time and effort, and Carter, and I know Matt's been a part of it, and Clyde Johnson as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I guess if you guys can work with Carter to get any sort of thoughts you might have additionally on the plans before the August 19th meeting, we would very appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Just a parting comment along those lines, and I suspect it's already happened, but since we're talking about it. Carter, with you, I'm assuming that you're coordinating with Cindy Bonacci, especially as you look at those connections and trail and pedestrian, just with parks and rec, because that's obviously such a priority internally, and obviously this speaks to that connectivity. But is it fair to say that between now and the 19th, just engaging Cindy in making sure that she doesn't have any additional thoughts from the city's perspective?
She has been engaged in it, and she brought that connection idea to us through the survey that we started.
Good teamwork, it's a lovely thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but do we, is Stacy going to be part of our budget presentation?
She is, she's in her office watching us on the video.
Do we want to?
We can waive it if we want.
Do we want to bump it up, I mean, for her sake, or just keep it?
Stacy texts me with what she wants to do.
It's up to you, Stacy.
Because if the rest of the council's happy with that, I'm sure.
I think this next one's pretty quick, so let's jump into this next one, and then maybe we want to swap the last two.
Okay, all right. Well, Sudhi, if you'll go ahead and call the next item, number two, please.
Next item is discussion of council priorities dealing with rural preservation.
Oh, maybe I got that back. I was going to say.
Yeah, so that does look like a little short one.
Can we handle number three next?
Is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Discussion of ethics ordinance.
All right.
Mr. Ken Gerard.
Take it away, Ken.
Great.
He doesn't get to leave early, though, does he?
He gets to be fast. So Mayor Proten, members of the council, we had discussed the modification to the Milton Ethics Ordinance, the last work session, or maybe two work sessions ago. And the council had given me some fairly specific direction on some things they would like to see modified or perhaps looked at again. I have done that. I believe I had issued you all a modified text some weeks ago, but I want to go through it with you very quickly now. Go ahead, if you will, and turn to page 13 of the Ethics Ordinance. That is the beginning of Article V on Ethics Complaints, and quite frankly, that is where I wanted to walk you through where we are.
Is that going to be the same page 13 from the one that you emailed?
It should be, yes, sir.
On the 20th, okay.
Yes. And that is just the beginning of Article V, Ethics Complaints. Again, let me just take you through, what I have done is basically took the last version you all looked at, accepted everything, and then redlined on top of that. And that kind of makes the changes stand out. First of all, the first concern the council had is in the event that Sudhi does something terribly unethical, we wanted to make sure that Chris would take over for her and perform her duties. And it was a good, it was a good recommendation, quite frankly. Obviously, we want to have a fallback. I'm having some fun. But that's what we did. So we have changed it to make sure, because the city clerk has a lot of obligations in the Ethics Ordinance, and I think you all were just concerned to make sure that we have all our bases covered, if you will. On page 14, with respect to processing of the Ethics Complaints, the original draft had had the city attorney doing some of the processing, particularly with respect to the initial review of the complaint, to ensure that it met the six baseline criteria that have to be in a tendered Ethics Complaint. For instance, number one, an Ethics Complaint in Milton has to identify the specific provisions of the ordinance that has been violated. Number two, it has to be supported by affidavits based on personal knowledge. Number three, it has to show affirmatively that the affiant is competent to testify. Number five, it has to have an attached documentation supporting the complaint. It has to be signed and notarized, and it has to be filed within six months of the alleged violation. That's all on page 13. I'm backing up, just to tell you, those are the things that the reviewing individual has to review for. If it doesn't have one of those six things, it gets tossed. Originally, the city attorney was going to review that, and I have changed it to where the city clerk will conduct that initial review. And again, that was just based upon some feedback, and that's fine. So that's all on page 14. And assuming that the tendered complaint satisfies the requirements of those six items, then the actual complaint gets forwarded to the subject of the complaint, who then has to file their response.
May I have a question?
Let me keep going. Again, we're just focusing on the changes that I've made since the last time. If you will go to page 16, please. This is the constitution of the Ethics Panel. All right, this is probably the largest change that we are making, and that is the makeup of what sort of a tribunal will actually hear Ethics Complaints in Milton. I think, as I explained several weeks ago, the rationale for this change is not that the current Ethics Board is doing anything wrong or incorrect. It's simply, based upon the product of experience, we're thinking about, maybe there's a way we can do it even better, and maybe we can take even the smallest hint of concern away from the ability of those members to be able to hear these complaints as objectively and impartially as possible. So what we put together was assembling, basically, a case-by-case tribunal that will be comprised of three attorneys that must have practices outside of Milton. And this is how we will, section four on page 16, is how we will assemble, or how the criteria to be on that panel. If you go down to section four, D1, you'll see where we changed it, that they must be an attorney-at-law in good standing with the state bar of Georgia. I think the council had concerns with what the heck is a competent lawyer in the first place, so we struck that, and we simply provided that they are a lawyer in good standing with the state bar of Georgia. Number two, have at least five years' experience in the practice of law, with no less than three years dedicated to general civil litigation practice. Again, not wanting to cinch it up too tightly, basically, a general civil law practitioner will be appropriate. Do not reside or maintain an office within, we had 10 miles, that was believed to be a little bit too much. Simply do not reside or maintain an office within the city limits of Milton. So anyone that lives and has an office outside of Milton will be a candidate. Number four, this is continued from the last time, the last draft, they cannot be an employee or city official, and have not been an employee or city official during the three months immediately preceding his or her employment. And number five, I believe this was a concern that Councilmember Thurman had, the attorney can have, have no, or other members of their family can have no business or contractual relations with the city of Milton, and otherwise have no conflict of interest in providing service on the Ethics Panel. And while a generic conflict of interest requirement may not mean that much to an attorney, it means a whole lot, because obviously they are governed by the state bar rules as well, and they cannot participate in any matter under the ethics rules of the state bar which govern them, that would present an ethical conflict. Turning the page, that sets forth a criteria about who can be part of the clerk's list of 15. No less than 15 attorneys have to be on sort of a panel. What's that? I'm sorry.
I wonder if we're not imposing something on ourselves that we can't meet as far as coming up with 15 attorneys?
Well, and Councilmember Lusk's point is a good one, but the point there is to have a pool of 15 just kind of sitting there, percolating, and hopefully we'll never need them, but if we do need them, that's when we pull down our three. We can certainly tweak that number. Again, this is just in the draft stages, and if that's too many, it's a lot. Having a battery of 15 is a lot.
Well, considering how much of a problem it is, like getting people to serve on committees, boards.
You know, and it's a good point, and I'm hoping, it's sort of like, you know, I participate in CLEs where I speak, I'm hoping they will view it as almost an honor to be picked and to be able to do this sort of thing, sort of like when we put members on the tree committee or the various committees. It's sort of an honor to be picked, and it's a civic responsibility, and their civic duty ostensibly, and I hope they will do that. But Councilmember Lusk's point is a valid.
It may be worth, you know, leaving it in there and seeing, you know, go fishing and see what happens, and if we can't get 15, then we can revisit it.
At some point, once we turn loose on implementing this and we begin to make the phone calls, we'll get a good sense as to whether that number's pie in the sky or not. If they say, forget it, I don't.
All right. Go ahead, Ken.
Page 17. This is, again, just comments, we heard back, feedback we heard back. First of all, was the selection process. How do we pick our free panel? Once an Ethics Complaint actually comes in, and now we have to actually assemble a tribunal, one thing the council felt strongly about was we wanted to have a witness to the selection process, which we have added. The drawing of names by the city clerk shall be witnessed by at least one of the member of the city staff or city attorney to ensure the integrity of the selection process. And then at the bottom of that same paragraph, upon selection of those three, there will be a list together, and that will be certified by the two witnesses. Going down to the bottom of page 17 in section 5B, although I'm sure that all lawyers are altruistic and would do this for free, we have yielded to the practicalities of the world we live in and have decided to assign a per diem fee for each meeting date that the attorneys will serve. If a hearing lasts multiple days, then the Ethics Panel attorney shall receive a separate per diem for each day of hearing attendance. This council will approve that per diem, I'm thinking something along the lines of $100 a meeting, $200 a meeting, and it will have to be the same for each member of the panel, and you will approve it.
Diem means day.
Right.
Are we going to differentiate between day and meetings?
Yeah, I guess we could. Per diem, to me, takes on a term of art, it's just that singular pay you get for some event, but your point's well taken, per diem is per day. That's true. Keep going on section six on page 18. This council had concerns with respect to the, having the power even to remove a member of this panel. I think you're concerned about being involved in that process at all. I've got to tell you, I've left you in there as having the authority to remove a panel simply because I don't know who else can do it but you. And again, it's very unlikely you would ever have to do this. This would only be in situations where you assemble a panel, and then because of neglect of duty or misconduct, they just don't show up, or they do something that is so beyond the pale that you have no choice but to take action. It's going to have to fall on you to probably be the removing body. Let's keep going. We're about, actually, quite frankly, we're about done. The only other substantive modification is on page 24. I think the council, this is in respect to the wrongful use of the Ethics Ordinance, the notion of using the ordinance for some reason other than the ethical betterment of the city of Milton. I think there were some on the council who wanted the fee-shifting language to be better detailed. So if, in fact, that there is a finding by the Ethics Panel that there has been a wrongful use of the ordinance, under H3, the Ethics Panel will be entitled, or will be authorized to basically assign the individual that uses the Ethics Panel or the Ethics Ordinance wrongfully to assess against them costs and attorney's fees, and this is where we put in, "For purposes of this subsection, the term 'costs' shall include the staff time dedicated to processing the Ethics Complaint, as well as copy costs and other directly attributable administrative expenses. For purposes of this subsection, the phrase 'attorney fees' shall include the reasonable fees of the attorney retained, if any, by the subject of the Ethics Complaint, as well as any fees necessary to be paid to the Ethics Panel attorneys." So in other words, we're talking about if an Ethics Complaint is filed that is improper and improper use of this ordinance, the Ethics Panel could not only assign to that party that acted improperly the per diems for their own costs, but even for staff time and even for the costs of the attorney that was retained by the subject of the complaint. A lot of times, those folks will retain counsel, and that would be a legitimate basis for them to assign those costs. Members of council, those are the concerns that you all expressed, or the feedback I got from the last meeting. Again, we are not to a point where we can do anything, except if the council is comfortable with this, moving forward with this paradigm of how the Ethics Tribunal should look like, you just need to give me that direction, and I will go ahead and put it in the hopper to begin the first presentation.
Well, it looks like, based on our last work session, you've captured most, if not all, of our concerns, but why don't we just go down the list here real quick and start with Karen and move through to Alan.
Yeah, it looks like you've covered everything. My only question was, I know the Ethics Board has met sometime in the last couple of weeks. I want to make sure they're familiar with what we're doing here, and I don't want to read an article in the paper that we've kicked the Ethics Board out, they're all upset and protesting or anything.
I'll tell you what I will do, as soon as I get the direction, even tonight, that this council is interested in perhaps going down this path, I will make sure the Ethics Board all get a copy of this ordinance, they can review it, solicit feedback. I will tell you, they did have a meeting scheduled, I believe it was for last week, but a forum did not attend.
Okay, so are they, but are they even aware that we are considering making this significant change?
Counselperson, I believe they are aware that there is a modification of the code of the works, but I will concede you, they have not had this draft provided to them.
Okay.
Julie, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. One, thank you, just a couple of quick, probably just points of clarification. Knowing that the city clerk would be the individual to review any complaint that comes in, if she or any future city clerk had any question legally, would this language allow that sort of question? Because there's one or two things that probably could have, she, he might have a question about. about. Would this preclude that dialogue?
It doesn't address it, so it certainly does not preclude it. If the city clerk had a question as to whether a component of the code had been met, and she called me, I would be happy to provide her guidance on that.
That wouldn't preclude that, because I can see where there might be a need to get a legal input about something. Okay, so that wouldn't preclude it. The others on page 16, item D4, just where it says that nobody on the panel would be an employee of the city or have been employed for the last three months. Hypothetically, Ken, if somebody from your firm were no longer with your firm, or it seems to me that three months is perhaps not long enough. I just wonder, would we really want somebody on the panel who had been an employee of the city? So, I would just ask us to consider whether or not it should just probably be somebody that hasn't been an employee of the city to remove any potential bias.
Well, you're only talking, you know, the funny thing is, is you're only talking about lawyers, so you're talking about a fairly small sliver of the attorney population that's ever going to be, have worked here. So, we could increase that number with very little impact on the.
It just seems to be consistent if we just simply said, "Are not an employee of the city, or never have been." I mean, that would be consistent, in my opinion. So, I'd just ask us to consider that. The other would be on page 17, just where it says it would be the city clerk and one other member of staff. I was just going to ask Chris if that should be, and the city manager. That's okay. If we want to say generical staff, or if it would be the city clerk and the city manager. I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, I just.
Maybe, I think, I mean, I would just, and I don't mean anything about this, but I would say keep staff member in case there was.
If he was out of town or something, that's fine.
Or whatever, you know.
So, that was just my point of clarification.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned, on page 18, Ken, when you talked about resignation of a member.
Yes.
You brought up if somebody couldn't make a meeting, is there any language here? I don't recall it, that's why I'm asking. Is there any language that says that a panel member, in order to stay in, I don't know, good standing with that Ethics Panel, would need to actually be available for the meetings? I just didn't see anything to that effect. So, let's just say that there was a hearing, and there were three meetings, and somebody on that panel didn't show up for two.
There was one of the three picked from the pool of 15 that didn't show up.
It just doesn't seem that that was addressed, and perhaps it should be.
It's not addressed specifically. That goes to the language of neglect of duty. I think that would be the neglect, would be not attending the meetings that you were supposed to attend.
Would it make sense just to make reference? I mean, you would hope that somebody would.
If there's three of them, they can find a date that they could get together.
I guess I'm just suggesting that I know on other committees, we do have language in the ordinance that states that expressly, and so I put that forward.
You know, it might make sense, because obviously, getting these things timely heard is so critical to the dispensation of justice, and so I could, we could let.
I just think it's consistent with how we have other ordinances, that if somebody doesn't show up for more than two or three meetings, they can't be on that or part of the process.
I think, Ken, I think, Ken, you know what you're getting at. Is that all you had, Julie?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Bill, you have anything further?
Other than the comments that I made earlier addressing Julie's comments about restricting former employees from being on the panel, I think in this market out there, I'd hesitate to put any onerous restrictions on former employees. Can't surprise somebody if they're.
And if I may just address that again, I think, and I surely understand your comments, Bill, my point was more that for consistency, if the intent of a 15-member panel is to remove any bias, it would seem that to remove any bias, it needs to remove anybody that's had any engagement with the city. I think otherwise you have the potential for bias. And I think our intent here was to come up with panel members that had had no involvement with the city or city council. So, that was the basis of that comment.
I think if you search deeply enough, you're going to find some type of conflict or interaction with the city, as small as we are out here.
But I think this was expressly if they were an employee, so that's a pretty small number of that.
Well, that might be something, too, that we can address with a time, you know, maybe increasing that three months to a six-month, or a year, something, but. We hear you. Joe Longoria?
I'm good.
Alan?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. As a follow-up to council member Zoner Bailey's comment regarding former employees, I just wonder, is there something ethically that we're not aware of in terms of attorneys? Let's say that, let's say, Ken, that you are no longer employed with the city. Let's say we have six months in our ordinance or whatever we want to put in our ordinance as far as timeframe, but you're a former employee of the city. You are my client, and let's say I'm brought up on ethics charges, and you are selected to be on that panel. Are you ethically able to then rule on me, your former client, even if it's six months?
Yeah.
Or would that matter? Could you be secured as a, as an attorney for the complaint and against me?
No. I mean, no and no is my answer. And again, the state bar rules of Georgia are going to govern my ethical duties to my clients, and so to the extent, in this hypothetical situation you are presenting me with, to the extent that you are my client and that I am asked to serve in a function where I either have to take a position adverse to you, that quite frankly is within the subject matter of what I was representing you on, which was city affairs, I won't be able to do that. To the extent that I'm asked to serve as a tribunal, neutral with respect to you, with you being my former client, it wouldn't be because of my allegiance to you, it would be my allegiance to the tribunal that I wouldn't be able to be on the tribunal, because I would owe the tribunal a duty of neutrality that I'm not sure I would be able to honor, because you're my client and would have been my client, and I know a lot of the things that would disqualify me. So, that's my answer.
Okay. My second comment has to go, has to do with the bottom of page 16, and looking at the Ethics Panel not having to be members or having members of their immediate family having business or contractual relationships, and this was an issue that was brought up by council member Thurman the last time we discussed this, and I remember bringing up also political contributions. I'm wondering if that falls under the category of otherwise having no conflict of interest, or does that need to be specifically spelled out?
Probably needs to be spelled out.
Okay. And then on page 17, section 5B, when we deal with paid per diem, and you've referenced a couple of times, $100 to $200 per day, per diem, or per diem for the meeting. I've had an Ethics Board member come to me concerned about that this perhaps changing the ordinance will cost us more than what we have now, and I contend that it will not, especially if we have $100 to $200 per meeting, per diem, for these individuals. I'm just wondering if $100 to $200 per diem is realistic to get 15 attorneys lined up and ready?
Again, I will have to see, and to the extent that I am met with absolute disgrace, because I have to come to you and say that nobody would work for that.
Because I asked you at the last meeting, would you do that?
Then I'll do that, but I will say, I mean, this is not a situation where these individuals are going to be asked to work a lot for Milton. Obviously, I think everyone within the sound of my voice hopes that they're never called upon, and we never have to assemble them ever. But if we do, again, my hope would be, and you know, you go to a lot of attorneys, and they will be happy to work as magistrates and I guess what I would call inferior adjudicatory judges. They're happy to do that. I'm optimistic that they will see this as something to put on their resume, and something that they can be proud of as part of a civic duty, and would do it for a de minimis per diem. If the madam clerk begins to call around and goes and discusses the terms of the per diem and gets laughed at, or simply says, "We're not willing to participate," I'll leave back in front of you. And at that point, you all may have to reconsider, because I know the city council doesn't want this to be financially burdensome to you, and I know that you don't want to be in a situation where you're spending.
Well, to ensure that we're taking a fiscally prudent step, I do believe that we're taking a step in the right direction in terms of providing impartiality and fair trial to those people who are brought up on ethics complaints, but to ensure that we're taking a fiscally responsible route. I don't know that it would be very difficult for you to compare what some of the recent cases that we've had, what it costs us under the current environment and what it might say would have cost us had we provided a $200 per diem for three individuals. Couldn't you do that?
I can, and I will tell you, you know, I don't expect that an ethics complaint would be processed, and I wouldn't be called at all. I expect I may occasionally, but with respect to this last one, I suspect that the amount of time I would spend, if you had three attorneys on this tribunal, my time would be a fraction of what it was on this. That's my hope. I mean, I think that's what all of us have been shooting for, is to try and see if we can lessen the expense. I mean, I wouldn't have to be discussing with folks about procedure, I wouldn't be discussing folks with standards of evidence and subpoenas and witness these, you know, the whole thought of all of us, I believe, is that you bring folks in here with, that's why we're talking about a minimum of three years of civil litigation practice, it's so that they have, they already have some of those rules internalized, and I'll be out of it. And so, sometime, yes, but I would suggest it would be a fraction.
And we pay you this much an hour rather than per day?
Well, that was painful, but yeah. But that's about right.
What do we pay our solicitor? Because we pay them based on a per diem, don't we?
It's a good, great question, and I don't know. Chris, do you have to know what? This is amazing, we've got a budget right in front of us, we can handle that.
I have two questions. One has to do with that per diem again.
Yep.
Do we set that as an overall per diem from, you know, this point on, or is it set for each trial, or?
Because my expectation is, is these will happen so infrequently, I would expect that we would have, we would set the per diem per trial. So, in other words, the ethics complaint would come in, it'd be processed at some point, the clerk will come to you and say, "We need to go ahead and set our per diem for this upcoming hearing," and that's when it gets set. Hopefully, it will be in the $200 range. We talked about it, that's what we'll set, but at that time, she'll have to come to you and make that presentation. It may be years from now, and the rates may be higher, and we'll have to do it then.
And my last statement, thank you, has to do, and I don't necessarily want to go through all of the different provisions of the ordinance that we did have, because I know we're really targeting on the composition of the Board of Ethics, but I do have a question on page 11, section 12, B2, where we are, there shall not be a violation of this ordinance if you have an occasional gift from a single source of $101 or less in any calendar year. Where on earth did we come up with $101? Did we get that out of the state?
I think that's where that's from.
Federal employees can't get anything near that.
I think that's where that's from, but before I commit to that, I will follow up with the entire council on an email communication.
Okay.
Provisions of the financial disclosure statement.
That may be where that's from as well. I thought it might be in the state model ethics ordinance as well.
So, what is?
I'll let you know.
No problems. All right, well, I think, Ken, you did a good job of captioning our last work session comments, and probably heard a few this evening, but if I'm speaking for all of us up here, I'd like you to go ahead and, maybe some of these things you've heard, you could work up something, but go ahead and get this thing rolling so we can.
What I'd like to do is go ahead and internalize and try to distill these comments tonight into another version, get it to the Ethics Board presently, and then go ahead and set it up with the city manager for a first presentation if we could.
I would agree with that. I think everybody else.
I would agree with that, and I think that comparison between costs is going to be important for that board.
Yeah, and I think it's important for them to understand we're not doing this because we don't think what they're doing is correct, this is a cost savings manner.
Well, that might be something for each of us to talk, contact our appointees and help disseminate that information. Well, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
We want to go ahead and move on to the budget, or what do you want to do?
Move on to the budget. If y'all don't mind, if we could take about a two-minute break prior to the budget, though, I'm going to ask Dave to take these monitors or something and flip them down, because I can't have a discussion with all y'all about the budget and not see the two of you, so.
We could probably flip them down if that's what you want to do.
Can you reach him and flip him down?
As long as I don't break it.
Want to add one to the budget, Dave?
Get somebody to clean up this glass.
So, we want to cut them off so they don't get so hot? Maybe we do need to take two minutes.
They don't run too hot, but.
Oh.
Let's do that, and I'll grab Diet Coke. Everybody good with caffeine? And we'll get in this.
Is that a warning?
Yeah. I think it's a warning.
No, no, it's actually a big discussion. Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any more tips. I don't know if there's any more tips in the last slide, I won't tempt you then.
You got that one?
Yeah. I would be glad when tomorrow's over and I don't get quite as many election related emails.
Oh, my gosh. No joke.
Y'all getting hungry? You got any stuff yet? Matt? Matt? Where are you, Matt?
Sounds lovely, doesn't it?
Yeah. Get this. I got a certified mail receipt at our home. Somebody sent me a certified mail. Yeah? Been worried about it all weekend. They send a certified mail, lots of them. He was the Republican Party, sent me a letter, he has a mail address. I told Vaca, my wife called, I said, "Rip it up," and this is really offensive. Make me have to sign for their shutdown of money for me. That's really offensive. I got one of those today, but I know mine's University of Georgia football ticket, so I'm good with that.
Well, that's, oh, see, that's different.
At least I know I'm not getting sued.
That's religious.
Right. All right. I think I'm going to do it in this order. I'm going to use capital projects, then get back to this, because I might even let them do this in that order, because you can sit parts by $200 for printing, but I'm going to bring up these bigger ideas.
Y'all ready? Suti, do you need to go ahead and announce the next item?
Next item is Presentation of Budget Workshop: Revenues and Expenditures, Capital Improvement, Project Prioritization. Ms. Stacy English.
Actually, let me start just, because my voice is a little bit stronger today than Stacy's, so I'll probably listen to the talking that Stacy was going to do tonight. You have in front of you a budget for fiscal year 11. Fiscal year 11 commences on the 1st of June through September 30th, 2011. We are on track with our budget calendar. This year, it's a bit expedited, and we'd like to get this budget adopted for, we're without Stacy for a couple of months, and I can tell you what we have presented to you tonight is a balanced budget. This obviously is your first time seeing it. This unfortunately or fortunately, it's not my first time seeing it, so we have been living and breathing this thing from a staff level for almost the last month and a half. This will represent the first full fiscal year budget that demonstrates our ability to provide service in the new form of public with some private partnership that we have. I'd like to, for the purposes of discussion tonight, take it in order of talking about revenues first and how we made revenue projections, talking about maintenance and operating initiatives that were presented by staff, and some of which are included in this budget, talk about capital projects, and then come back around to the basic MNO operating budget of the city, partly because I think what you're going to be interested in is not necessarily, well, we've got $150 for printing in here, and that's down $50 from last year. We could spend all night doing that, that's probably something, if you want to do it tonight, we absolutely can go line by line, if that's something you'd like to do on your own time over the next week. That's more of the standard thing to keep the doors open, but I think touching on some of the bigger things and kind of highlighting what is included in here will be helpful as you all understand this proposed budget. I'm no fool to think that this budget will change. I have never and probably never will in my career be able to deliver a budget that is in front of a group of people that say, "That's perfect, we all agree with it." And I get that, and I hope that's not the case, because it's input from everybody that's important to make a budget work. I learned something last week, and I think it's going to be my new buzzword, which is, "I'm not fat, I just have thick skin." to provide service in the new form of public with some private partnership that we have. I'd like to, for the purposes of discussion tonight, take it in order of talking about revenues first and how we made revenue projections, talking about maintenance and operating initiatives that were presented by staff and some of which are included in this budget, talk about capital projects, and then come back around to the basic MNO operating budget of the city. Partly because I think what you're going to be interested in is not necessarily, well, we've got $150 for printing in here, and that's down $50 from last year. We could spend all night doing that. That's probably something, if you want to do it tonight, we absolutely can go line by line. If that's something you'd like to do on your own time over the next week, that's more of the standard thing to keep the doors open. But I think touching on some of the bigger things and kind of highlighting what is included in here will be helpful as you all understand this proposed budget. I'm no fool to think that this budget will change. I have never and probably never will in my career be able to deliver a budget that is in front of a group of people that say, "That's perfect. We all agree with it." And I get that, and I hope that's not the case, because it's input from everybody that's important to make a budget work. I learned something last week that I think is going to be my new buzzword, which is, "I'm not fat, I just have thick skin." And for the purposes of tonight, let's just assume that we all have thick skin. If you think I'm nuts or I've put something in here that doesn't make any sense, tonight's the night I want to hear about it. If you think I've had amnesia and just haven't included something that you really, really want, tonight's the night to hear that as well. I hope this is as formal as it needs to be, because we're in a public forum, but I hope that we truly treat this as a work session, where we can talk candidly and openly with each other and get into the meat and potatoes of this. I want, just like you want, a budget that will sustain and advance the city in the next fiscal year. If we do the right thing here, we'll get to that. Let's start by talking about revenues.
Real quick, before you get in, for your sake, and I think you've articulated it, but just to make sure, let's do this in as much detail, let Chris drive the detail, so it helps get him the information he can in the compact time. Us knowing that we've just got this thing, so we're going to need some time to digest it, but why don't we let Chris drive the detail that we want to get into at this first meeting, but if anything's glaring, like you said, then we can comment on it. Do you want us to comment on it for your sake as we address it or hold on?
Yes. Yeah, it's going to be helpful. I've got kind of a sheet started here, but I'm going to just take comments as I get them. Part of the reason I wanted to see people's faces is sometimes I give comments not verbal, but sometimes I give them facial expressions. So that's why I wanted to be able to watch those as well.
Well, I think we'll let you drive how far.
So everyone's going to say their analysis is. All right, let's talk about revenues quickly, just because the purpose of a budget is to make sure that expenditures do not exceed revenues. And we have this year, as have consistently had as a city, certainly what Stacy and I both believe in, is conservative revenue estimations. It's never a good position to be in to liberally estimate your revenues and then figure out, "Oh, gosh, how are we going to get to those numbers?" It's always a safer approach, in my opinion, to estimate those conservatively. We do have some preliminary information from our tax digest from the Tax Assessor's Office. We relatively look flat year over year. Believe it or not, we were told, and I was told by the county manager, that the ZIP code 30004 was the only ZIP code in Fulton County that actually had any type of an increase, which is unique that more than 90% of our city is in 3004. And we have, excuse me, we haven't seen the total percentage yet, but it was indicated to me that that ZIP code was showing about a 3% increase, where the rest of the county was showing a 5% decrease in the tax digest. So just unique information.
Could you repeat that again?
3004, up somewhere in the neighborhood of 3%, where the remainder of the county on average was down 5%.
I think it speaks to the uniqueness of our wonderful community.
And just to clarify, that isn't reassessments that increased it, it was new property or new development that came on board that increased it.
All right, let's go to the sheet. If you take your second tab that kind of shows revenues, this is where I'm going to let, all right, let's use up about five minutes of Stacy's voice, and that's going to look at her export revenues, and then I'll move into the MNO initiatives.
Okay, just looking at property taxes in general, we looked at collecting 85% of our taxes based on the 2010 digest. The 2010 digest, we're looking at billing a little over 8.8 million, and 85% of that gets us to about the $7.5 million range. We also looked at prior year property taxes for real property. We projected that out, just using what we plan on billing for this year and what we think we can collect in fiscal year 2010, and then the rest, you know, not the rest, but a good majority of it, we'll be collecting in fiscal year 2011. We've been doing rather well with our property tax collections in, I guess, in the next fiscal year or the fiscal year after that, because we've been fairly aggressive in collecting them. We have been taking property taxes to sale. We've not had that many properties actually make it to the tax sale, because a lot of people do come in and pay prior. So we've been very successful with that. I don't know if you've been reading the Milton Gallup's, but we've been, you know, about 99, 98% collection rate for 2007, '08, and '09. Motor vehicle tax, it's pretty much flat from what we have for this, for fiscal year 2010. I'm just trying to hit some of the bigger ones. Franchise fees is flat from fiscal year 2010. We went up a little bit on local option sales tax, just based on the trend for this year. I have seen a little bit of an increasing trend. I can't tell if it's because of the way that they're distributing it now. They changed the distribution method. Prior years, they were distributing two months in arrears, and now they're one month in arrears. That could be the reason for the increase, or it could be just the economy's getting And I'm looking at insurance premium tax, we're looking to stay, remain flat on that. I only have one year of experience there with that, so, you know, we won't get this fiscal year's collection until October, so I can't tell you if we're projecting right out where we need to be again or not until October. Hopefully, we are. I haven't heard anything different. I did ask the, some of the department heads to kind of project what they think their department can produce, such as community development, and they gave me their own projections based on trends and experience. So if you have any questions about, you know, building permits, land disturbance impact fee, well, we don't have these. Zoning and land use permits, things like that, we can certainly address those tonight with Lynn here.
Question, the fence permitting? We shook zero on all that. Do we have a permit fee for that?
I'm sorry, I can actually address that. Those are actually lumped into building permits.
Okay, gotcha.
Question. How did you determine the building permit revenues based on what we've seen this past year?
Building permits, actually, it was a comparison, sorry, was a comparison from last year. And in fact, our building permits are up a good bit. I was really kind of surprised. Now, that's not to say they're up as high as 2007 or 2008, but it's up higher than 2009, so that's a fairly decent sign. We're seeing a lot of additions, a lot of, in fact, a lot of new permits, which are, again, unusual except for Milton. So I think that we may even hit $100,000 this year, but in that particular line item, if the trend continues. But again, without knowing what's going to happen in the next set of mortgage rates, et cetera, I wanted to be really conservative, so we made a protection based on potentially a kind of a double dip in the market, just in case. So I, we took it down from initially from $82,000 to be a little more conservative to $75,000.
Is this a gross number or net number, based on what Safe built?
This is the net number. This is the net number, yes.
Karen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got one question on the sales tax. I'm assuming this is based on our current apportionment with the other cities in Fulton County. How do we expect that may change based on census numbers? Is it going to be changing at all for this year, or when will we get our agreement worked out with Fulton County?
Well.
When will a judge make, when will a judge make a decision on what that agreement's going to be? Because we can't work it out.
Right. I don't know necessarily that it will be affected in the fiscal year 11 budget. Obviously, number one, in order to make that occur, the census data has to come in. Number two, we would project or presume that we're going to have an increase in our population number. That's kind of a given. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we will have an increase in local option sales tax, because it'll be depending upon what our increase does and puts us then as a percentage of the whole. So, you know, it's kind of an if this, then that, then this, then that. I don't know that we're projected to have census data in before the expiration of this fiscal year. I think we'll probably be having that discussion next year. Obviously, our hope is that we become a bigger percentage of pie for the purposes of this line, but just don't know.
I just didn't know when that information would be available, and once it was available, I didn't know when any kind of intergovernmental agreements would take effect.
If it takes as long as trying to negotiate a service delivery strategy, we might talk about this in 2016. So I don't think there's any, I don't, I think it'll be beyond this fiscal year, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
All right, go ahead.
Just want to point out, we actually have some new revenues, pardon me, we have some new revenues based on activity fees and activity commissions. These are based on new programs that the Parks and Recreation Department wants to do for the next fiscal year. And those will only come in if you approve the new programs, so keep that in mind. The fines and forfeitures, we actually increased that over fiscal year 2010 based on trending. Those are pretty much the larger items. Did anybody have any questions about any of the smaller items that are in revenue?
Jeff?
Does our revenue chart of accounts match up with what the GMA has as their chart of accounts? And I'm not specifically talking about the numbers of the accounts. I'm talking about, we have all the categories that they have. So we collect basically any, from any revenue source that's viable for us to collect from.
Yeah, the Georgia Uniform Chart of Accounts gives us a list of the revenues, revenue sources, and we periodically go through those to make sure that we are getting what we need to be getting and, you know.
I promised my teacher in municipal finance that I would ask that question, so I feel very good.
And you're on the record doing.
Is that Sabrina Cape that taught that? Yeah, she taught me well, too.
All righty. Go ahead, Julie, real quick.
Thank you. On fines and forfeitures, I know at one point, this goes back several months, it looked like fines and forfeitures, particularly fines, were off from what we had projected. What are we seeing out of courts and out of fines? And then my other question just has to do with the miscellaneous revenue. So what is municipal court, what are we seeing in terms of activity there as well as other fines and forfeitures? Obviously, we're flat with 2009.
Well, we watched, obviously, we watched the month-to-month trend, and when we came up with this number, we kind of took where we were nine months into the fiscal year. Took that, divided by nine, multiplied by 12, and it gets you some.
And at one point, we had some volatility, so.
We did, although I can tell you the court has had some pretty consistent months in the last couple of months. And for whatever reason, I don't know, and I really don't care, but.
Anyway, we're seeing more consistency now.
We're seeing very, yes, yes, we're seeing consistency.
And then on the, just miscellaneous revenue, that $38,000.
That is actually deferred revenue that comes in from the build-out refund that we received from building this facility out.
Okay.
So we have to book it in this way, according to what the auditors have asked us to do.
Thank you.
One final question on the revenue is, I know that we've got some cases right now that are in the court system that we hope to be able to collect reimbursement of attorney fees and things like that on. I'm assuming that is not booked, because we really don't know when it may actually make it through Fulton County Superior Court.
We don't know when it would make it through the court, and we don't know if we're going to be successful in recovery.
And if we did recover, would it just go under fines and forfeitures, or would it go under other?
Here we go, fines and forfe, I don't know where it would go. It would go somewhere. We'll have to figure.
Revenue, that would be a good one.
It would be kind of a transfer in, I guess.
Yeah, that would, that would probably be a miscellaneous revenue of some sort, just because of the nature of it. It wouldn't necessarily be a fine.
Because we are still trying to pursue reimbursement of attorney fees on those.
Oh, we are, but unfortunately, we're still in.
Fulton County never, never been?
Still in, though. We'll give you an update on those in the executive session.
And this may be a subset of Karen's question just then, but some of the prior fees that we were looking to reclaim in Fulton County?
That, that all deals with litigation.
Right. So that's why I'm not being specific here.
That's not captured here.
Okay. But we hope we might be able to see some of that.
Oh, yeah, we haven't lost hope of the fact that.
In 2011.
Right. The thing I don't want to do, though, is I don't want to present you a balanced budget with, actually, we need to get.
No, absolutely. But along those lines of things that we might anticipate, that was, would be one of those we hope to anticipate cautiously afterwards.
I believe Alan had one quick comment on.
In terms of the ordinance that we just passed on wireless telecommunications and the annual licensing fee, are we planning to handle that now or when we finally get an understanding of how much it's going to cost relative to the inspections and set the fees accordingly? Are we doing that as a budget amendment, or how are we going to handle that?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to, though. Obviously, with the ordinance just adopted tonight, we're not prepared to have those numbers in here.
So I guess that would be a budget amendment.
The thing about those is that we are purely, and that was the purpose of passing it tonight as a, as an annual fee, is that you really shouldn't see a swing in your budget one way or the other, because our fee should be consistent, right? Cost to deliver the service, so.
But we'd still need to record.
We would still record it as money in, money out.
Right.
But I don't think that it's going to all of a sudden say, "We've got an extra $10,000 to play within the budget."
Right. Gotcha. All right.
Okay. Let me, if y'all will take the tab that says MNO initiatives and move to that page. The format that we did the budget this year, let me give you a little bit of an overview, and then we'll talk about some stuff specifically. The format that we did the budget in this year was to ask department heads, as well as myself and Stacy and Ken and anybody who would contribute to this budget, to make a first pass at the budget. Number one, identifying their goals and objectives and how they attach to the priorities of the council. Number two, to give us an idea of what the maintenance and operating needs of the city to continue business moving forward in almost a status quo type environment. After we did that, we asked the department heads to come up with initiative requests. After we asked them to come up with initiative requests, we asked them to come up with capital project requests. We put all these things together, and for days on end, we, you know, looked at all of these different things and how they work together, asking ourselves the question, "Does this fit the goals and objectives of the department and the city? More importantly, does this fit one of the priorities of the council?" Because even though we are still working through developing a strategic plan, I think I get your priorities at this point over the next couple of years. We came up with those. So we asked that question, "Does this fit the priorities of the council?" If the answer was yes to any of those, we tried our best to fund what we could. If the answer was no, it obviously was not considered from the very beginning. But even in that circumstance, I can tell you that we're still dealing with what I hope you see as a very tight and lean budget. There were things that just, in this economy, just didn't fund this year. We also took an attempt at really typing up the maintenance and operating budget, which we went through line by line. We looked at professional development, we looked at travel, we looked at training, we looked at coffee service, we looked at all the things, and if they didn't meet the core mission of the city of Milton, they were things that were not funded in this particular year. I bring that up before I start to talk about maintenance and operating initiatives, partly because you'll see that initially there was department requests, and I think there was one that even predated this form, where the number was bigger. Was this the biggest, biggest number there was? I have, I broke my starting one. Never mind, I took that. No, I didn't. It's right here. No, I didn't.
I think it was a little bit bigger than this one.
I think it was a little bit bigger than the 777. We made a first pass and just said, "That's just not even, that's not an option this year," so that just goes away. But we took initially what was $777,000 worth of requests and pared that down in this budget to $304,000, based on what I just indicated to you as kind of our working process in identifying if it meant the goals and objectives of the city and if it meant the priorities of the council. What I'd like to do is walk through some of these and explain them in better detail and maybe some of the thought process that went into why I said either yes or no, and see what you think. I'm going to start with the one initiative that I put in this budget and get it out of the way, and then we'll talk about the departments. And if you have any specific questions of the department heads, they're all here tonight. One of the things that I've been trying to do over the past several months is to figure out how to best utilize and get the biggest benefit from our citizen group, Milton Groves Green. I've met with them, I've met at their meetings, I talked with them about their budget request for the year, talked to them about direction and all that good stuff. One of the things that, in my opinion, is very, very, very important this year is that we actually move forward with Milton Groves Green becoming Milton's Keep America Beautiful But like with any volunteer group, and this is certainly not anything negative towards Milton Groves Green, they're a very active group, but in order to accomplish objectives, especially that are time-bound and time-commitment objectives, I haven't had success to this point really even start. I haven't had success to this point, really even starting the process of becoming the affiliate. And this is, this is important to the city, because at this point, we really have severed ties with Keep North Fulton Beautiful. I'm going to use these terms, Keep Milton Beautiful, Milton Grows Green. I'm not trying to rename a group or name a group, just understand that what I've learned from Keep America Beautiful is they will support a group that starts with "keep" and ends with "beautiful," and puts the city in the middle. And that's really all they're interested in calling their affiliates. Now, we could be some version thereof, Keep Milton Grows Green, if we want to do that, but according to them, we have to be Keep something beautiful. So, we, naturally, we would.
Keep Milton Green and Beautiful.
You know, there's, there's quite a process, there's quite a commitment with going, going along with that. There are also requirements that go along with Bring One to the Chipper, Adopt a Road, Earth Day, all of the projects that this particular group is working on. And they're, they're good projects, I don't want you to hear that they're not good projects. But I'm having a hard time from a staff management level, picking the right expertise within our city hall, to number one, keep them on task, but number two, be a benefit to them. I have found myself and Lynn trying to act in that role at this point, for the purposes of just keeping it moving forward. I had started with a pie-in-the-sky discussion saying, you know, I really think that Milton, because of its commitment to, to green growth and environmental projects, and wanting to pursue a green designation, and we're doing that kind of stuff. You know, initially, I thought, well, we are prime, ripe, and ready to do what a lot of other cities have done, who have taken on that step, and that is to actually have a legitimate environmental education coordinator. The cities around us have that position. We have kind of a cross need in Milton because of our MPDES requirements, and I thought, you know, if there was one initiative I was going to pursue this year, that was what I was going to try to pursue. Number one, to provide some meaningful direction to a committee. Number two, to provide some meaningful deliverables to the city. Obviously, as you can see, I started with a great, a great idea there and said, okay, let's, let's bring this environmental education coordinator on, let's turn it loose. I have since, have had a discussion with one of the co-chairs of Milton Grows Green. I have since modified that request down to where I still think we accomplish it, but I think we accomplish it on a more of a part-time consulting type basis, as opposed to increasing the city's overhead, which is why you've seen that request. At least, at this point, it's still in there, and I dropped that request from $85,000 down to $30,000. I hope you look at that. I hope if, if that's something that's important to you, that we find an opportunity to at least have somebody on the hook, so to speak, so that I can give absolute direction to somebody and say, I want to come, keep, insert, and, beautiful this year, and be able to actually put that together and bring it to a conclusion.
Do you expect this to be a city employee, or do you expect this to be contracted out? Will this include benefits, or just include?
Right. What it is at this point is a, is a part-time, non-benefit. I can see it going, actually, I probably see it as more of a, of a contract basis than I do really attack, really into any type of city. I have an idea, and I have an idea. I don't want to sit tonight, though, and, you know, get into that level of detail, partly because I'm just not prepared to go public with that yet.
Is it fair to say, Chris, that that individual would also, that the amount might vary depending on how much volunteer time you had, and, you know, certain times of the year, obviously, you've got a stronger volunteer base that can help with certain initiatives, and I'm assuming that that contracted pricing theory could be less, hopefully not more, but could be less, depending on how much of those initiatives continue to be pursued, obviously with a strong, you know, MGG committee?
Right. Yes, to answer your question.
Especially when I'm hearing you say contracted.
Certainly couldn't, couldn't be more, could be less. If it doesn't fund, that doesn't mean we stop doing some of the things. I just don't know that I necessarily have the oomph to be able to.
Right.
It's hard to guarantee success, but this allows me to at least, I really want to get off the, off the blocks with getting a Milton affiliate.
And the way I understand it, this would, this would really give a dedicated staff, I say staff, but contracted liaison to work with Milton Grows Green, to really help get some of those initiatives done that are on the priority list, that this committee has, I say committee, that this council has supported, but that just obviously, you know, needs some additional support from, from staff.
Right. And I've got a lot of support out of that committee. I've logged down in getting the KAB stuff moving, and I don't know, and partly, I think it's because it's a time commitment. It requires a, a team of six to go through a certain set of training, particularly if it's a volunteer base. It's intense training, it's long training. It is, it is and would be a massive commitment from a volunteer group. So, I get why it hasn't kind of started like I had hoped it would start.
But this specifically, then, is really with the initial initiative, is to officially become a Milton, Keep Milton Beautiful.
Be a affiliate, yes.
Right. So, that's really, at least for this initial funding, is with that specific project and task in mind?
If we could get that one thing, and I explained this to that, to the MGG committee, my priority for this year, I had six pages of priorities from them, and I focus all into one, and if we're going to be, that's the one that we need to, to get accomplished this year.
Keep Milton Beautiful as Milton Grows Green.
Something, I, I, yeah, they.
That might not fit on a T-shirt.
With Milton Grows Green, and they said, that doesn't start with "keep" and end with "beautiful." I still, oh, that's great.
Alrighty.
All right, y'all. Moving down the initiative requests, there were two in IT. One was a GIS application development, another was an e-citation module. At this point, I've, there's, there's still some possibility that I'll come back to you in a future discussion, depending on where we are with prioritization of funds, and say the GIS application might be something we reconsider in this particular budget. The e-citation module in the tight budget year, we've been writing tickets since the beginning of time, and we can continue to do those for one more year, particularly when we are really in a, in a, in a time when I think there's other programs. And moving into the police department, the police department had several requests. This is where I want to look at your face and say, okay, Chris, are you kidding or not? All of the call volume and call stats, and we've talked about this before, so this isn't anything new, it all still demonstrates that our staffing is inadequate in our uniform patrol. It demonstrates that. We put it up against the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police Formulas, we put it up against the IACP, which is the International Association Chiefs of Police Formulas, the professionally-accepted formulas for person staffing, we used to call it manpower, I guess, but let's call it person staffing. And it still shows that based on current data, that we are two people short in the Uniform Patrol Division, which is, as I would have expected it to be, like any good police department does, if you actually have hard data and hard facts and say, this is what the data says, this is what we should be staffed at, we need to fill the gap, which is where the initial request was, that we bring two more people into the Uniform Patrol Division. It's difficult in an economy like this, in a budget year like this, to even sit here and say, folks, I think we need to add staff. But I think we need to add staff in the police department. In, in looking at it, we can sit here and talk about police liability, and what's the liability by not being correctly staffed and all those good things, there's a host of reasons why it is important to move forward with at least addition, some additional police staff. You'll see the number in my recommended line there. I didn't get into the whole two. Initially, we had the budget balanced, and we had a police officer from the waist up, is what I told the police department, which basically meant that I was able to fund it at mid-year. But we've.
As opposed to mid-waist, or mid-line, or?
Right. From the waist up, which would have been a funding of a police officer at mid-year. The budget, obviously, has been a living, breathing document, and it tightened, and it expanded, and it tightened, and it expanded. And we found a way that I believe we can authorize that, the funding for the staffing for the whole year. I still don't think it gets us the whole way there, based on the data that we have, but I think it is a step in the right direction. I ask that you consider doing that. I think it's important. It goes back to one of the core tenets of our, of what we're here for, and that is to provide for the safety of the city. And I really hope that you look at that this year and consider authorizing the police department's uniform patrol to grow by one.
Go ahead, Alan.
Question. Does this in fact add another patrol officer on duty?
It does.
So, we would have two?
No, this, this adds one body. The perfect world is that we would add two people, to go from 14 people in the patrol division to 60.
Okay, so describe, so describe for me coverage on any one shift. I guess that's what I need to know. I mean, I, I think I know what it is now, so what would that change, if anything?
It's four to five now. What we did is we took the IACP's back-end formula, which takes into account call volume, response times, it accounts for the time the officers aren't at work, which is court, training, sick, vacation, and then it gives you a relief factor, which is if you want one body here 24/7, then you have to have two-point-ish people to have one body here 24/7. So, we took that formula, and according to that formula, based on our call stats, we need to have 16 people. That's the same number we asked for last year. That's the same number we asked to get up to last year. So, we haven't said that we've had an increase in call volume from last year to this year, we're just, we're asking again for what we tried to get up to last year. Now, something that you need to keep in mind now, or something that I actually just thought of sitting back there, is last year, you gave me a position so that we could put somebody on a task force, and we, you graciously gave me that position, and I was able to hire somebody, and we're on a waiting list to put that body on a task force. So, the moment that body gets on the task force, that's one person coming off patrol. So, you give me one today, and in three months, four months, we get a spot on with those tasks, we're back to where we are right now, as far as on patrol.
But this is a step in the right direction. I mean, we, we are certainly not going to, in a, in the budget where it is this year, I don't see that we, that we completely fill the gap. I just want to continue to demonstrate that we're, that we're taking steps there to get there each year.
Well, the, the data and everything says we're two down, or whatever, and I'm assuming I know the answer to this, but do you feel it in reality, too?
What I feel in reality most is that we don't have officers to do the things the community is wanting us to do. When, when Chris is here, it was Chris and me. We were the only two certified police officers on the police department that weren't assigned to a shift, that weren't assigned to being responsible for answering 911 calls for service. So, then Chris left. So, then I said, I got to have help. So, we realigned a little bit, and that's when we reclassified two lieutenants to captains. So, in, in reality, they're answering calls, and they're getting to them. I mean, I'm not getting complaints that we aren't getting to 911 calls. What I'm getting is that we don't have the extra people, we don't have the extra manpower to do the extra things.
Not making any headway, you're treading water.
The community stuff, the bicycle rodeos, the safety fairs, the attend our cookouts, those are the things that we're not getting to, because at this point, all we're doing is still answering 911 calls.
What about traffic patrol?
Specifically, what about traffic?
Like, and I guess that was my question, is describe for me, when we have four to five people on duty during a shift, how many of those are doing traffic patrol? Just speeding?
Zero. We, we have no, we do not have a single officer, patrol car, anything that, that's just assigned to work traffic.
They're only, they're only working traffic if they're not out on a call.
That is correct.
And so, that 16 contemplates, I don't, I don't see how the 16 would ever get you that either, the 16 that you, your goal.
I would have liked to have asked for five or six. I'm trying to do baby steps here. I mean, I envision about 10 more bodies. And if I could have about 10 more bodies, I think that's about where we're going to stay. You know, unless there's some huge growth, population growth in Milton. I feel like we're still doing catch-up from the get-go. I feel like we were staffed, based on some Fulton County numbers, that were maybe misleading. We didn't take into account the fact that when there were only three Fulton Police Cars that appeared at any one time, they still had a whole fleet of officers that could come and fill in, because they had a whole county full of officers. So, I, I feel like if, if in the next five, six years, we can get 10 more positions, we'll be good, I'll quit asking for positions every year. You'll get to one of my next initiatives, which is a planning and compliance officer. I really, really, that's where I need help also, besides the community events, because that's a task that I'm doing. We just got our state certification, and that was a tremendous amount of work on me, and that keeps me from doing any, what I call visionary stuff, chief stuff, planning, reading, research, where are we going? I feel like I'm just stuck in office, doing operational kind of stuff. So, a planning officer gives me someone to work internal investigations, it gives me somebody to write policy, it gives me somebody to keep up the certification, it gives me somebody to pursue national certification, national accreditation, which I really, really want to do. So, those are really the two areas where I feel like we're lacking, is the community stuff that the community is demanding, the relationship that they want from us, and then some of those little, ancillary, ancillary, anc.
Insular.
Ancillary, there you go. Some of those functions. However, my primary duty is to make sure that the 911 calls get answered, and that the officers on the street are safe, that they've slept, that they haven't worked all night, then gone to court, and then come back in to work another 12-hour shifts, shift at night. So, that, that's what I got to do. That's what we have to do, is answer 911 calls, and then we'll build from there. So, I feel some of this other stuff more, but I think this is my primary responsibility to get the streets staffed, before I beg for this other stuff.
$101,000, is that a burdened labor cost solely, or is it the total cost to outfit?
Total cost.
Car, equipment, salary benefits, uniforms.
Okay. Second question. I believe the police department, possibly fire department, too, are probably the only departments that require overtime payments. Can you tell me off the top of your head, what overtime costs have been this year, and, and have you allowed for it at all in your budget? Or is that included somewhere?
Last year.
I've got it right here. Last year, overtime included from budgeted 50, in the amended budget, $56,500.
So, have we allowed for it in another line item?
Have we allowed for?
The overtime cost.
For, there, there's a request for fiscal year 11, yes. It's on the summary sheet for the police, it's in a 58 through 44.
Okay.
And along those, and also the same lines of effect, if I may.
Go ahead.
From what I heard you say, is because of this officer that we are going to move them to, tell me again what we're moving them to from last year?
We're hoping to get them on a federal task force.
Okay, the task force. So, we're basically going to have a, a net zero right now, so you're going to need that same overtime. If we, if you, we were to give you the additional FDE that you're looking for, if you were to get two FDEs, which are not recommended here from the city manager, would it, how would that bring the overtime down? Or will we still anticipate $56,000 in overtime?
I think the overtime would not come down that much at this point.
You know, overtime is not.
It's court.
Right.
It's training. It's filling in as court securities, as well as testifying in court. If they have to go down to Fulton Court, it's a whole day. And if it's their day off, it's eight hours. By the time they drive down there, it's it. So, I don't think at this point, adding two would significantly decrease that overtime. I think that, that overtime is going to stay that way while we stay this size, because in order to make anybody go to training, some have to fill in for them. And we can't, there's not enough of us to fill in and let people off. So, any training, any vacation, any sick is almost automatically over. Doesn't he traffic detail, the morning, do any DUI, safety checkpoints?
But that all ends up in the overtime?
General. Now, we try. I tell them, you know, if, if you've got enough people, and somebody's got their hour, then they can go, go. They know that, they know that what we're working with here, we need all year. This isn't, you know, fluff time where they just hang out an hour over. I, I look, I look at every paycheck that's turned in, every timesheet, to make sure they're not amusing overtime. And in, long for, you're always going to have to have overtime. We're never going to give up. We're going to have to have that in our budget.
And is that the sort of thing, and I'm assuming the answer is yes, but just in the part of this healthy discussion, when you guys look at overtime, if you talk as a team with all of your officers also, about what sorts of creative ways might there be, and I'm sure you've thought through lots of those, but obviously, I think all of us think along those lines of team, but if everybody knows that the goal is to bring that down, I mean, sometimes that group think can, can bring forward some ideas that maybe have not gotten to the budget. But obviously, anything that we can do to help bring that overtime down is helpful without negating. without negating public safety.
Let me talk about overtime, just for a second, because obviously, when you tighten up a budget, that's one of the first things you look at. Overtime in police department is probably different than overtime in just about any government department, because there's so many factors that people have to be here for, that we can't control what time they must be somewhere, because they'll get these things in the mail that say, "You are hereby commanded that laid all of the business aside. You be in appear."
Right.
And that's just part of their job, because every time they make a case, it goes to court. And one of the darndest things about working overnight is that they don't hold court at 2:00 in the morning, as much as I tried to convince them to when I was working those hours. They just don't. So in order to be in court, inevitably, some of the overtime will be generated by that call that dispatches at 5:45, and we don't subscribe to the notion of get there in 15 minutes, turn it over to somebody new. I mean, we get there, and we start and finish what we start. So police overtime is a different animal than almost any other overtime. You can go to almost a no overtime policy in anything other than public safety, and I think you'll see that that's pretty much the notion across the city. And probably even for the sake of argument, it's even easier to control the fire department than it is the police department, because you can go to an almost acceptable dire emergency situation, a no overtime policy in the fire department. The police are the unique animal. And I would represent to you that the figure that's in the budget is not that we're having to call people in to fill shortages the bulk of the time. What's in the budget is to handle the requirements of the job that just don't happen nine to five.
Right.
All right. Are we perhaps getting into the weeds a little bit?
We are, but I think that was a good discussion.
Okay.
That was good.
All right.
I'll keep going here, and just say that there's a couple things that my recommendation is to look at in future years, if we choose to do it. I will tell you that it's listed in here tasers, or electronic control weapons. I can tell you, we can have a long discussion. I'll tell you, I wasn't a fan of them in the beginning. Now having seen them in practice, I am a fan, absolutely a fan. I have seen how they decrease injuries and liability, and I never would've thought that I would've ever said, at least until there was more data out there, to say, "Let's start, or let's even talk about equipping our police officers with tasers." I can tell you, having seen them in practice, and seen them in agencies that have deployed them, it is a whole lot better, no, doesn't look better, but it is a whole lot better to use an electronic control-type weapon than it is to start hitting somebody with a stick, or spraying them with pepper spray. And we give sticks and spray to our people today. So even though it looks worse, you know, we don't have to go far to look at jurisdictions where they actually have many, many, many success stories on injuries saved to offenders and injuries not happening to police officers. So they do limit injuries. It says zero in here. So Bill's gonna ask me, "Well, you're giving this big sales pitch, why have you not funded it?"
What's unit cost of... approximate?
Eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four. What we were proposing to do is that we actually funded the purchase of this out of the...
Sticks and tear cans?
We're gonna let the bad guys buy these for us, out of our seized assets fund.
Are there any grants available to fund?
Probably. We could look, but these are becoming so mainstream and common, we would not be unique in a grant request for tasers.
Is there any kind of specialized training and all that they would have to go through?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Is there any additional cost?
We'll do it in the council meeting. Fund one.
Is there any additional cost?
I'll raise my hand.
Make sure it's in there.
No, we would...
Joel?
We would have somebody go to the class A to become certified as an instructor, or we could, some of our relationships, I'm sure we could borrow instructors from other jurisdictions.
Okay. And there's enough, right, there would be enough to purchase those currently with seized assets?
At eight thirty, that's one per officer.
That's right. Yes. And I believe that if you're gonna roll them out, you need to roll them out to everybody. You don't want the one, you don't want the one guy that has it, or one lady who has it, across town, when you are there being the one guy, one lady who needs it, because that's a long time to wait for somebody.
You can borrow it if you think you need it.
It's funny, there was a guy that used to fight us all the time in Walmart. He'd shoplift more than two times a week, and he was known for fighting with the police. And I happened to be in the parking lot when I was public safety director at one point when I heard this call dispatch. I got on my cellphone real quick, and I called out for a dispatch, and I said, "Send me somebody over the tasers, I'm too old to fight."
You miss those days, don't you?
No. It hurts too much. All right, let's keep going. I've got to reclassify captains to majors. I don't know necessarily that we're gonna change titles, it probably, if you elect to fund this, it'll probably be just to fix a disparity in pay that has been identified by the human resource department. We have light people doing similar jobs between the police department and the fire department in two different pay classifications. That's just bad, that's just a bad place to be with disparity in pay. This truly fixes an equity problem, is what this does. I don't know that we necessarily, I'm not real rank happy, so call it what you want to call it, but this is, this is not to try to do anything other than fix a human resources identified issue in the pay structure. And I'm gonna have to turn it over to the dev to talk about this celebrate. She said this is really, really cool, and our people really, really, really need this to do good stuff, and I said, "Okay, I buy it."
Our detectives use cell phones a lot to solve crimes, and their cell phones just store everything in them, the calls, the texts, emails that have been sent back and forth. So the dates are recorded, the times are recorded, and the locations are recorded. Now, I can't do this, so I'm gonna stay not very technical. What this system does is allows the cellphone to basically be plugged into the computer, and this software just almost instantly downloads all the information. Right now, we have one detective who is specially trained to do this, and it takes him hours to do what this will allow all four detectives to do in just a matter of moments. And our, Captain Huey, who's in charge of the detective division, is hoping that he can extend some good hands to some surrounding agencies, and, you know, let them, if they've got a big case, use this. But our homicides were solved, our first homicide was solved by the cellphone.
So this would probably pay for itself in time, I mean, just in the...
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Is this an annual fee?
The, no, the eight thousand is a one-time fee, and then there is either a one thousand or a two thousand dollar annual maintenance. Apparently, it's, I believe it's a one thousand dollar annual maintenance, unless some extraordinary jump in technology happens in a year, and then there'll be the...
That would never happen.
No, that never happens.
Do you want to go back to the previous one?
Yeah, because it looks like Chief recommended sixty-two eighty-four, which would include for two of the captain positions to be elevated to majors, and you recommended double that amount.
I did, and that was after it was recommended, and we had a more thorough analysis done by the H R department. I've got a very thorough analysis that strikes a trend.
That's so much it would take.
This actually fixes the problem of the inequity in pay, and I'd be happy to, if you want me to, forward that H R analysis out to you, I'd be happy to do that, that you can take a look at.
Truly, the actual cost to bring the two captains up to the same pay rate as the battalion chief, after plugging into the pay salary and benefit spreadsheet, it cost eight thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars.
It's not reflected... Versus the twelve-two fifty-five. Versus the twelve-two that's shown there.
Right. Whenever we do the M and O initiative spreadsheet, we just kind of estimate what we think the cost is gonna be, and then I plug in the actual numbers into the M and O budget, based on, you know, the actual spreadsheets that I use to figure out salary and benefits and all of that, so the true cost is eight thousand four hundred twenty-three.
Even better.
So you could get a basic forensic workstation, same budget.
Yeah.
Only pay shipping and handling.
Any other questions about police before we move into fire?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you for protecting our citizens.
We had eleven requests out of the fire department.
I've got one quick question. Are these numbers to the left there, is that their ranking? Is that, what, a five, and a ten, and a one? Is that what that is?
That's their priority.
That was the department's priority, yes.
Who reclassified?
I'm sorry.
I don't think they were reclassified. I think they're just there.
Are they just in, is this, are they in any particular order as they are now? They're not?
They're not.
Okay.
I'm gonna breeze through the fire, well, I'll start a little bit quicker than I'll end up. The command vehicle upgrade, this is included, and I probably could've put this in the maintenance and operating budget, just as a general expense, but we didn't want to show that it is a new initiative. We have one need in the fire command vehicle, which is the vehicle that the battalion chiefs drive, and it's the perfect vehicle for fighting a firefight that's not raining outside. It has a difficult time allowing the battalion chief to manage the fire scene as they need to in the elements, and we found that out. If you picture our truck, it has a nice flat cover on it, and that's, so which means if the weather's there, the firefighter, the battalion chief is managing the scene from behind the steering wheel, and that really is the wrong place to be. This equips the back of the command vehicle with the appropriate mobile radio to be able to command the scene, the correct boards to maintain firefighter accountability, gets them out of the weather. This is just something that over time, we've identified that, gosh, we really need to do this to be effective.
You just open the back of the truck, and it's something that comes out, basically?
So it's not necessarily a new vehicle, it's outfitting the current?
This is to make our current one work.
Okay.
Two of the fire department's biggest requests this year is an annual hydrant maintenance and hydrant marker system. I'm gonna ask Chief Edgar to describe this, because I know it's a little blue reflective thing, but he can tell you why this is important and why it wasn't a number one priority.
This is a two-part program, and one of the problems that we found in our biannual hydrant maintenance program was that in the past, Fulton County was providing us with paint for the hydrants, and they were providing us a quality paint that you could see from a distance and all of that. But with their recent revenue shortfalls and budget cuts, they decided to give us paint that looked like a gray battleship color. And the problem with that is at night, it darkens that hydrant so much, you can't even see it. So what this initiative does is allows us to buy some reflective paint, and what we do is we put glass beads in the paint. So it's like a silver paint, but then we put glass beads in it, and we paint just the top of the hydrant. So when your headlights or flashlight hits it in the middle of the night, you can go ahead and see that hydrant, and it almost glows. So it's very helpful for spotting hydrants in the middle of the night. The other part of this is a marker system, and you've probably seen them on the highways. They're just the blue markers, just like you see on the center lines, but it's a blue marker that's reflective. And what that does is that you place one of those in front of every hydrant on the roadway. So as you're traveling down the road, you can quickly spot that hydrant. You know there's a hydrant there somewhere, you look to the right or the left, you'll see that reflective paint, and there's your hydrant. So it quickly spots the hydrant.
So both of those are under hydrant marker system, the paint and the marker?
It's the annual hydrant maintenance, which is the paint.
Okay.
And the marker system is actually the markers and an epoxy, and a couple tools to actually apply those to the roadway.
And would y'all apply those?
Yes. When we do our maintenance this year, what we decided to do was hold off on painting last cycle. Come October, we'll go ahead and start painting again with the new paint, if this is approved, and then also place those markers in the roadway, and then G P S all the hydrants, so we can provide those to G I S, and then we'll add those to our hydrant maps.
And when y'all do, just maybe as an aside, annual hydrant maintenance, that's other things, do you open them up, you grease them, and all that stuff, or is that another whole nother ballgame?
Well, what we do is, each time we paint a hydrant, before we paint them, we flush them, and we coat the threads, and then we also now, with the I S O, just recently going through that, we do a static and residual pressure test on those. So it gives us a better idea of what our water pressure is throughout the city.
Yep.
Chief, I recognize the benefit of having the markers in the road, but I've been on enough roads, you see these markers most times scattered into the weeds, too. They don't always hold up under every condition out there. Is there a current technology that would have a, that would emit a signal if you placed them on a hydrant, that you could pick up with some device in your equipment, that would alert you that there's a...
I'm not familiar with anything. There's probably some technology out there that could provide that, but I'm not familiar with it.
Well, what comes to mind is what we saw down in Savannah, at the trade show, and the literature that I gave to you, Chris, I think there are some devices in there that would emit signals that would alert you to, you know, practically anything that you could imagine. And I think Elfrona has something similar to these locating devices.
We could look at it.
And Chief, just in terms of the color, you said that at night is when it becomes reflective, so it's not a pink top or anything during the day? It's really just at night?
No. And when you would be driving during the day...
It still looks like a regular fire hydrant.
Like a silver hydrant, just like you see today.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would not be an I S O.
At night, it looks like a little UFO.
He didn't use the word to describe it, that he used what he described it to Stacy. The stuff that you put in the, he called it foo-foo dust.
The old foo-foo dust.
We also have foo-foo dust on the hydrant.
Like tooth fairy dust, you know?
Must look like a herd of opossums staring on it.
All right.
Okay. Moving into a couple of other ones. The Class A uniforms, that's been downgraded, that request considerably from what it was initially. It's important that our people look good, it's important that we are prepared in the unfortunate event that we have to attend something that we really don't want to attend, particularly being funerals and those type of events. This is not an actual dress uniform for everybody in the department, this is for Chief Edgar's command staff. I think it's appropriate, I hope to God we never have to use them, but I also think it's appropriate being a Metropolitan Atlanta agency that we're prepared if we need to. I want to tell you, the one paramedic pay, it's in there, it costs not to exceed twenty-four thousand, or twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. There's three different methods by which we could calculate paramedic pay. I think this number's changed, potentially since Stacy and I have talked last, which is why I'm saying it's not to exceed. Our policies call for this today, and allow for incentive pay for paramedics. We haven't offered it previously, because we haven't been recognized as an advanced life support agency, using paramedics in their paramedic function. Obviously, we have moved to that at this point, and I think it's just appropriate to make sure that we adhere with our policy. It's what? Let me think of that and get back to you. Got you. Backup portable radios, we shrunk that down considerably as well. I think that's the one that...
That's the one that funds the bank charger?
Correct. What this does, provides us a charging system in the command vehicle. Some of the experiences that we've had recently, our portable radio batteries have been dying, or losing their charge after several hours of use. So what we need to do is have the ability to charge these on scene. Right now, we all have charges in the fire stations. So once they change the battery out in the morning, which is a normal routine, they'll spend all day, but then they could have a fire and not change that battery out when they got back to the station in between calls or whatever, and then we end up with dead batteries. So this gives us the ability to charge batteries, and have charged batteries on the scene.
Health and wellness program. Let me talk just briefly about why you'll see the funding went up from line one to line two, and then maybe Chief Edgar can explain exactly what this is. This was a fire department initiative initially, and after hearing the explanation as to why it was important and important for the health of our firefighters, what is, my request for funding in there incorporates both the fire department and the police department. It was an initiative that was supported by fire, supported by H R, and said if it's good for our public safety people, it should be good for our public safety people globally, as opposed to just one department. Chief, you want to talk about why that's important?
One of the things that we need to do, NFPA recommends this, as well as OSHA, that our public safety folks are, have baseline screening for T B, hepatitis, because these are some of the things that we all come in contact with on a daily basis. And if we don't have baseline testing, then we have no way to determine where this, if somebody, you know, acquires this, is where it came from, or when it started. So we've actually started this program this year, and we're able to do baseline testing on all our police officers and all our firefighters. What we need to do, though, is continue this annually. And in addition to this, is what we need to do, is have stress tests for our folks. So what this does, is gives us this continuous annual testing for T B, hepatitis, as well as doing an annual stress test for our firefighters and police officers. And then we also have a program that we're working on. We've got several firefighters that are part of an International Association of Fire Chiefs We've got several firefighters that are part of an International Association of Fire Chiefs and Firefighters Program for Wellness. So what it does, it sets people up on a physical fitness program, it sets them up on a dietary program if they need that, and it's just continuous. These are like peer groups that work with them on a daily basis to achieve whatever goals that are set for them. I was able to find a group just to get some quotes on what this would cost, and it basically comes down to about $250 per employee to have these tests done. And what they do is they do all the blood work testing, and they do the physical, and they do the stress test.
Any questions on that so far?
Just a quick question, knowing with health benefits, and I'm assuming you looked at this, but just ask the question anyway, are any of these ever covered, you know, as a basic annual physical? Is it the collection of the data itself on some of these tests? I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't have a redundant cost if some of it could be covered under our typical health benefits through some of those providers?
We did look at that. I'll tell you where we kind of shook out on that. It's the difference between encouraging it and making it mandatory, because we don't make mandatory everybody taking our health insurance, because somebody, other people are covered by, you know, retirement benefit with the county or spouse. And, you know, to not try to fund a program like this, we were kind of leaving it to the employees' willingness to participate. And I don't know that that necessarily does us any good, you know, in having a baseline and all that good stuff. That's, you know, yeah, we looked at saying, okay, let's require everybody to go do the physical, and they can submit their receipt, and we'll pay the $10 copay. You know, that's an option. The thing we don't have is any type of consistency or any type of baseline that we can really go back to.
So I'll just bring that up as a, if there was an easy way to do that, obviously if you could mitigate the cost, if you've already got somebody who's going to the Emory Clinic or wherever, and they're getting the data, it's silly to have a duplicate test. I understand the need for it.
And one of the things that was interesting is that through Atlanta Fire Department, last year, the Emory University and the hospital over here offered free cardiac screening for all police and firefighters. And unfortunately, as a voluntary program, we did not get the participation that I hoped we would have gotten. I would have hoped that every firefighter and police officer would have taken advantage of that, and they didn't. So I was afraid by looking at this program, if we didn't do this with some consistency and offer it through the department, and it's this particular group I looked at, they'll actually come here, and we'll just filter through. They have a mobile unit that comes out, and it does everything all right here. So it just makes it so much more, much easier to do, and it's more consistency when you're doing it, and then we can monitor it a lot better than going.
The other request of the fire department this year was a promotion of one of battalion chiefs to assistant fire chief, and then the backfill of a firefighter, and all the associated costs that go along with that. I think we've kind of looked at it and said, you know, we could probably, let's look at that one next June, I guess, is what we came to. Obviously, if you choose, you want to fund that. I could support that Chief Edgar needs it, without a doubt. I just think that with the budget year we have this year, that is probably one that we'll more maintain this year and look for enhancements in the future.
Any final questions on the fire department?
All right. I want to work through Parks and Rec real quick, and then I'll ask if y'all would be interested in taking a five or seven minute break. We've got some sandwiches that showed up, realized we're getting past it.
I'll speak for us and say yes.
He says say yes.
Are you making an executive decision?
I am.
All right. All right. Parks and Recreation. Obviously, I understand, looked at Parks and Recreation's initiatives. That was priority number one of the council, priority number three of the council to some extent, Parks and Recreation. So looking at Parks and Recreation requests, I said, how are we going to be tremendously better at the end of this fiscal year than we are today? I think we've made a lot of steps already, and I can tell you that Cindy's doing the job of about four people. So kudos to how she's keeping it all together, I'm not sure. This was one of the wonderful, wonderfully easy decisions to make to say whether or not these fund or not, because the requests in the Parks and Rec department are all funded by offsetting revenues, and to not fund these particular things as an issue, it means we take the revenues off the revenue line as well. So this is more or less one of those no-brainer things. Cindy could certainly answer questions as to what she intends on doing, we're starting to deliver programs, actually, and doing more than talking about it, we're going to do it in Parks and Recreation this year. So if you have specific questions about what this contemplates, it is a well-thought-out plan, has been vetted by the Parks and Recreation Board, and is a recommendation. And again, this is one of those fairly no-brainer ones from a budget, because if you spend it, you make more than that, and if you don't spend it, we take those off the revenue line as well. So if you want to get into that detail tonight, we can. We can do it at a different time and explain what some of these programs are. I'll leave that up to what level of detail you want right now.
Personally, I mean, with them being a moneymaker in theory, we'll get into those details a little bit later, but if anybody's got any...
I'll read through them really quickly. They're just day camps and that kind of thing, which is really positive.
I think it is, too. Yeah, no, there's no doubt about it.
I would agree that they're all very positive. My only question would be that of timing, is that you obviously have to hire that person before the programs are necessarily in place. So my question for future meetings would be, if the programs somehow don't get implemented, how are we going to fund the salary if we don't generate the revenue? Or from a timing perspective?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is falling in the definition of an enterprise fund?
It could.
With regards to the Recreation Program Coordinator position, if this position were to be funded, it would be with hopefully an October 1st start date, which would kick off the fiscal year, which would coincide with all the programming efforts that we have put in place and initiatives for this year. A lot of our programs are going to be partnerships or contracted-type programs. Even though some of them will be of that nature, those programs still have to be managed. Those relationships, those partnerships, those schedules, those expectations have to be managed. This person would not only facilitate programs, but would assist with special events, would assist with administrative responsibilities, and to some extent may get involved with some of the other larger planning initiatives that we have on the capital side of the budget. So it should coincide with the different programs that we're going to be kicking off. Most of our programs, there'll be some things we're able to start this fall, some small things. Most of them will kick off in winter or heavily in spring and summer of next year. So it allows us a little bit of time. Some of them are already in the works, so I'm doing that now, but to facilitate them once they start, I need that person to help out with that.
So there may be a timing issue, but again, regardless, some of those programs would initiate as soon as the winter?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's great. Some things we need to be moving forward with, so thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on that?
We'll take five minutes, we'll come back.
I think that'd sound good.
Yeah, we can get a notice in for August 21, can't we? Yeah. Do you have like an email that we could send to Sudi?
I need to call her and find out right now. Stories, I texted.
I don't know. We're going to be done this for a bit.
Yeah, just a couple lines posted in my Herold that y'all can read.
Okay.
Twenty-third?
Hang with us.
Twenty-third, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, no, we're probably...
Yes, if you would flip.
To a capital projects fund. And that first page is a summary sheet. Flip one more page and you're going to have a sheet that looks something very similar to this.
Okay.
Let's work on this sheet.
That means I'm going to get my glasses out.
Is that the smallest pot set?
Trying to control paper, Bill.
We could have made it a little smaller. As we work through this, let me start by just orienting you to the form which probably is going a little bit more in detail than we need to. But the project itself is all the way to the left. We have '07 budget, '08 budget, '09 amended, '10 amended. And the items that we'll look at tonight are, in that column it says FY 2010 budget balance remaining, and the line next to that which is FY 2011 budget requested. That's going to kind of give you some ideas to what budget is remaining in the current fiscal year that we're in, as well as what the request to add to that is in fiscal year '11. Plus then on some of them we'll also look out into '12 and '13. There's two new capital requests that are listed in the mayor and council budget, city manager budget, if they needed to be, but a couple of projects that I see on the horizon that I just want to start some funding in so that we're not hit at some point and say, gosh, I didn't anticipate that. The first line which is UASI, we really didn't know what the title, UASI is fine at this point. That is the infrastructure costs that are going to go along with us enhancing the radio system and public safety. We've talked about that. I just don't want to be sitting there right now, if all goes well and six councils agree to the way in which it's funded, we become 4.65 percent of a figure that's probably somewhere around $8 million, which over the course of the two-year funding that you've seen there that we've put in gets us to where we would need to be for our portion of the funding to be able to move to a new radio system. You have to see how that all shakes out. Right now that is the best way that $8 million could fund from our perspective. To be a smaller percentage than 4 percent of $8 million, that's great. Right now the notion is that we're buying a regional system and it will be based on subscriber unit, which we want to make sure we keep it that way. If it all of a sudden becomes who has the need for a tower, we don't want it to be budgeted that way because we are one of those that has a need. So if we can be in and out of the game at three and quarter million dollars, or three and quarter thousand dollars, that's probably the better place to be than to be in $2 million for a new tower. So that's what that is. I've also started some seed money in there to continue our project moving forward for City Hall. We don't need to get into the details of that tonight, but just understand that what I want you to know is that I've put some money in there to continue moving forward with that. I stepped out today a little bit with that project to figure somebody's got to spearhead this thing, and I'm going to go with it for a little while. I'll come back to you with updates. Obviously I don't want to go too far, but we've got to take some action with moving forward with planning for City Hall. Okay. To continue to go through this, moving down into what the requests are this year, as in any good refresh or replace program, we always want to make sure that we are continuing to replace equipment that costs us more to fix than it does to replace technology. We're on a refresh program where we will refresh desktops, laptops that are going out of warranty, that are already out of warranty. It's just a customary thing to do and that's what the computer refresh is. We're also starting, you'll see both in the police and fire, a request to continue to add to a vehicle replacement reserve for the replacement of police cars, replacement of fire trucks. The question if I were y'all that I would ask me if I were you is to say, well, why is that dollar figure that's going into there so small when it looks like there's bigger numbers going into there in future years? And the reason is that this fiscal year will represent our fourth of five capital lease payments. Once the initial outlay for police cars and fire trucks lease payment is paid off, that will free up just north of $700,000 in the budget every year. So we've calculated that, the replacement to be on track so that we are able to replace when we need to, knowing that after next year, an additional $700,000 that was going to a capital lease payment could potentially be reallocated into a replacement reserve. Does that make sense?
About how many miles do our police cars currently have on them and how much longer do you expect them to be able to be in service?
I looked at the mileage board, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago. They range, you have 40, 50, 60, you know, maybe some of them there's high as 70,000 at this point. They'll last 100,000 miles, 110,000 miles. We are committed at this point to very good preventative maintenance and I think that's what keeps a police car lasting longer than others is if you actually do what you're supposed to do to competitively maintain it, you make them last longer. Our police cars are always going to have miles on them quicker than some other cities because we're so darn big.
Right.
And there's a lot of driving that goes out in 12 hours just because of our geography.
So we may still have two or three years on some of the cars that we can use it.
That's correct.
Others?
Others we're probably going to have to replace it. Yes. If the new police officer funds, you can see that's where the new vehicle is included in the capital budget. If you go down into the fire department, you'll see a request for advanced life support equipment at $10,000. The reason that's in there at $10,000 is because the piece of equipment that they need to become advanced life support is the 12-lead EKG, the thing that makes them, one of the pieces of equipment that makes them ALS, which we've seen demonstrated here in the council chambers, that costs between $26,000, $28,000, $30,000 depending on the model. So to have $30,000 there, you know, funded about two-thirds if you want, which is why we believe it's necessary that if we need to buy one, we need to add funding so that we at least have enough to be able to buy one.
Going back to the vehicles, $36,000, is that for new vehicles? Is that for one vehicle or two?
That's for one, but what that includes is the purchase price of the vehicle, all of the lights and equipment and radio, computer and mount and--
And that's about what it costs for one vehicle?
Makes the car ready to drive. Yes, the vehicle itself is, gosh, it's been a couple of years since I ordered one, but they were $20,400 a couple of years ago. The base car is probably somewhat below 20s, but by the time you put a $3,500 radio in it, in the camera system and lights on the top of it and cage in the back of it, it gets to $36,000.
So we're talking about purchase and not lease?
That's what it's in here at.
We can lease if we choose to. Right now the leasing costs more money than what we have sitting in the bank, so it makes more sense. If we have the funding available, we can go ahead and purchase it.
It just said vehicle, so that's why I wasn't sure if it was one or more.
I would think also what's the average miles per year that gets put on a vehicle?
One of the things that we are doing with this budget, which is not reflected on this sheet, but will be reflected in the future sheets in the fire department after the vehicle replacement reserve line, is the SCBA Cascade trailer. This is something we've had in the capital budget and funded before. We've taken it out of the capital budget because we've had access to other jurisdictions. What this does is it refills our tanks on the scene of a fire so that they can continue to have air after they use a bottle, like refill the bottle there at the scene. This needs to go back in this year, and I'll tell you the reason this needs to go back in this year is because we were dangerously close to running out of air at the Telomor fire and we ran out of air last night where we had to stop at interior attack because the firefighters were out of air at the scene. That's not acceptable and that's just something we have to fund this year. So the next budget document that'll come to you is going to have that in there. Thanks to our neighbors, you know, we haven't had a problem. Roswell has an air light truck, Alberta has one, Forsyth has one, they've all more than been willing to allow us to use them, and that all works until they're using them too. So--
So what amount generally should we have--
We need to become self-sufficient.
Are we just going to shift one of those $40,000?
Actually, the Cascade system that was budgeted here was budgeted at about an $80,000 system. It was budgeted over two years. Talking with Chief Edgar this morning, he seems reasonably confident that he can come somewhere in the $50,000 to $55,000 range. So in future documents you'll see an estimate that allows for us to purchase that in this fiscal year. Okay, let's talk about Public Works because this was the big, this was my big goal this year's, if I could at all do it, was to figure out how to keep the funding requirement of the comprehensive transportation plan in the budget, which as you all remember, may know or want to know is $2.275 million. That was Kim Lee Horn's recommendation in the adopted Transportation Master Plan for annual funding. We left $2.25 million in there as long as we could and it finally became the last thing when we were, you know, sitting on a budget that was about a half million dollars unbalanced, was to say, okay, now we're going to have to look at that line. What this tells us though, folks, is that we're still not able to present to you a budget with all of the needs, at least as we see them, trying to balance the needs of the city and meeting those, there's still not enough money in the budget to present to you a budget that has a whole $2.275 million in it. We're closer this year than we have ever been. If you look back into prior years, you know, we've been at $635,000, we've been at $1330, we've been at $500,000. You know, last year only being able to do $500,000 in it, well, we did more than a million, million-two, I guess, this year, more than we were able to do last year. So that's good. I mean, that's where a large portion of the cost savings in moving away from a contract comes. We tried as hard as we could to get it to that $2.275, this thing just wouldn't have balanced if we kept it at $2.275. You know, Carter has some ideas as to how we can be just as effective, obviously with limitations. I mean, you take a half million dollars out of it, you don't pay a half million dollars worth of road. But a way that we prioritize that funding, we'll bring that to you. But in this balanced budget, what is funded in capital for pavement management is $2.275 million. Questions on that because I know that's a big item. Some other items in Public Works, obviously some continuation of projects, which is what's all in the white columns from prior years with appropriate funding for this year. You'll also see something that wasn't in last year's budget, Bethany-Cogburn intersection improvements of $575,000. That's a figure that is an estimation at this point to carry our share of the load in making sure that the roads, when a new high school opens up, have the work done to them that need to be done to them to move traffic. So obviously that project is still conceptual and moving to actually design. So we'll tighten that number in as we can. Staff's given the best recommendation it can based on what needs to be done there, but that's why you're seeing that line in your new this year is that relates to the traffic enhancements at the new high school.
Chris?
Quick question.
Sure.
From a timing perspective, knowing that the high school's not going to open until, I guess, the fall of 2012, this obviously will bump up against that, are we envisioning that all of that would be expended in 2011? Or again, it's fluid, just depending on construction?
Here comes our explanation.
And I know that we've been thinking, Carter, you've been thinking creatively about, you know, how we could get some of those things funded other than 100 percent from our budget.
Well, we're expecting that that bid will be let and awarded during 2011, whether or not the construction is actually completed at that time. It will just depend on the speed of construction at the high school. We obviously want to coordinate that, work with them, as well as when we are able to get the design completed and out to bid, but we expect it to be awarded--
How conservative would you say that $575 is? I realize it's a fluid number.
Yeah, I think it's relatively conservative. We wanted to make sure that we didn't underfund that particular line item because we knew it needed to be done this year. We're currently working with the engineer to come up with a better estimate and if we can revise that as we work through the budget process, we certainly will. The engineer that we're using is the same engineer that is doing the work for the high school, so there is some consistency there between their plan and ours.
And then when you compare that to the Hopeful Heights' Cogburn intersection, is there any ability to lever, I mean, obviously they're two different intersections, but-- there any ability to lever, I mean, obviously, they're two different intersections, but still similar area? Opportunity there for any consolidation of costs or expense?
I don't think so. It's really going to be two different processes. The Hopewell-Francis-Cogburn intersection is going to go through a little bit different process, and that will look at a couple of different alternatives that we could use there.
Okay.
The Francis, I'm sorry, the Bethany-Ben-Cogburn, it's pretty well set. We know what's going to go in there, it's just a matter of getting it designed and installed.
Okay.
So, with the Hopewell-Francis-Cogburn, we're really looking at design dollars this year, to split it by budget dollars for construction the following year, or the year after.
What is it that's under gravel roads maintenance that we can't read?
Yeah, there's a line.
MPDES.
Oh, our permit.
Now, we just punched a hole right through MPDES.
And it was short enough that you couldn't figure it out from that.
Bill, do you have something?
A quick question for Lynn. Has the contractor pulled the permit on the high school yet?
They have. In fact, they came in and pulled it about two weeks ago.
We know when they're going to get a start work order?
I don't know. They're supposed to come for the pre-con, I don't think they've done that yet, so...
All right. Any questions on that? One of the things that we need to do, and I think we've talked about, is we've got an unsecured Public Works yard right now in Birmingham Park. I'll tell you that people have found it, it was pretty safe back there for a while. People have found it and found the dumpster. We need to, number one, it's a bad spot, because it's in the middle of the park. We need to relocate it, number one. Number two is, we need to provide some dollars to be able to secure it. You know, we're starting out to own some things that need to be secured, even if it's variable message boards that are portable, as well as our materials for road repair and, you know, stuff that Public Works use. It's been found, and we find stuff in the dumpster now that somebody has decided they were going to dispose of for free. So, this is the right thing to do. We need to get it out of the middle of the park. We need to get it to an adjacent, either to the edge of the park, or to its own location. Something that, something that'll allow us to pick the assets that we own, and that we can provide sufficient security for.
So, is most of that security of the asset, or it's finding another space that you have to rent?
No, this, Ed, well, there are two different options. The funding is in here for the purpose of acquiring some type of a portable covered facility, as well as securing an area. There is another option which may exist, if it were to change from what the request is, that I'll bring forward to you what the next option is.
So, is it like a portable, like a metal building, or something?
Something, yeah, some, some, go ahead, Carter, come on up. Carter, no.
Not necessarily portable building, but a structure of some sort for storage. Right now, we're looking at a basic metal building that would allow us to store the variable message boards, signs, barricades, cones, sand spreaders, some of the specialty equipment and materials that we use in execution of our contract with our subcontractor.
Just remember that that park will be accessible visually from a lot of people, so hopefully it doesn't look too institutional. Again, you can, for the same caution, just, just a consideration, depending on where you're going to locate it in the middle of the park?
We'll try to make it look as...
I would suspect maybe you want to talk to the park, just depending on where it's going to be located, because if it's a structure that's sizable, it's going to become a visible entity on the parkland, so...
We've picked this part right now that is, Cindy's nodding, that is really...
Cut away.
Yeah, it's as least visible as possible. The other option is for us to find a location, a space, you know, certain other options.
Yeah, and I'm just, just when you described that, I was thinking of eventual plans for the park. And with the house that's there, and again, I know that some of the stuff is much bigger, there's no way it's going to fit in that garage, I just wonder if temporarily, can you secure any of it in the garage and the house that's not being used? No? Okay.
All right. Are we able to secure the house? The house is secure. There's also some Public Works sidewalk repair in there, which is just general sidewalk repairs, for the sidewalks that, when it heats up during the day, they buckle it, or when it cools down at night, they go down. I don't want to go into detail on that, but that's just something. All right, I'm going to ask Cindy, before I even try to do justice to her section, she might as well just come on up. What the Parks and Rec Department has this year is not a request for any new funding in the capital budget, just a reprioritization of the funding that has already existed after bidding out of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and this is the Parks and Rec Department's request to be able to split this existing funding up, and how they want to spend it.
Yes, thank you. As Chris said, there's no addition to the amount of capital that we're asking for this year. It's money that's already set aside in our capital fund. It utilizes not only the capital dollars that we have, what's been in the account for land acquisition or park improvements, but also $300,000 from the Trails Fund, and then also HYRE investment fund monies that will be applied towards the Bell Memorial Park improvements. Let me walk through. What I asked, what I did, and then what I asked the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to do, is to create a list maximizing the money we had. I mean, obviously, we could have taken the money that we have and spent all of that on one big project, or we could try to spread, spread it around and make as much impact as we can with the money that we have, and that's what we all agreed to do. There are roughly 12 total projects that are outlined this year. The first, and I'll do them in priority, so that you know what the thought process was for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. The first priority was the Bell Memorial Park improvements. You'll see $10,000 there from our capital fund, but an additional $40,000 will be applied from the HYRE investment money that HY pays us in fees each year. Those different projects will include the second part of the drainage project. The first part was just completed a week, two weeks ago, and they seem very, very pleased with the outcome of that. It looks great, and seems to be working well. And Phase Two is a larger portion of the drainage project that'll be done in the off-season in November, December. This will include two sets of new dugouts, some green initiatives that we're implementing, push-button faucets, motion sensors on the lights, heaters in the restrooms to make sure that the pipes don't break in the wintertime. Some, some field netting improvements, just a variety of things that's going to make the park look nice. That was some of the comments that we got in the survey results, the write-in results, was that we need to make sure that we're maintaining what we have first, before we build something new. And so, I agree. We need to make sure we're improving what we already have up and running for the public before we start any new initiatives, so that's why that was ranked number one. Number two was the Bethwell Community Center improvements and renovation. $110,000, that includes the site plan, the construction documents, a very small children's playground, possible arbor off to the side, parking, and the building improvements. And that was the number two priority. That's also tied to some of our revenue. Obviously, when that building opens, we're able to have activities and programs and rentals there. And lately, I get probably about five calls a week looking for a place to rent for a birthday party, a family gathering, a community meeting, so as soon as that building opens, I think it's going to be maximized, as far as the use goes. And so, that hopefully will open in spring of 2011. The third priority was the IGA agreement, hopefully utilizing Hopewell Middle School, Cogburn Woods, and Birmingham Falls Elementarys. We would be required, obviously, to upgrade the fields, putting in irrigation, and then maintaining the fields, which we would do through our contract with Optec for cutting and such. So, that's what that money would be used for.
I'm assuming we'd have some revenue from that, though?
Yes, yes. It's hard to predict right now, so I was trying to be conservative, but yes, there would be money that would be generated through those activities on the, on the school sites.
And I think that says schools, plural, correct?
Yes, Hopewell Middle School, Cogburn Woods, and Birmingham Falls. And the fourth...
I was told. And she said Hopewell-Cogburn and Birmingham Falls.
Correct, yes. Two elementary schools, one middle school.
And you're assuming that's kind of $25,000 per?
Mm-hmm.
And later, I know we may talk about this, are you in conversations with Northwestern at all?
Not right now. Their, their fields are already being utilized. These were the schools that had available space and did not, were not already entered into a lease agreement with another organization.
I'm just not sure that Northwestern's being used at full capacity, but we can know about that offline. I just, suggestion that maybe you want to look at that.
I think the line's, you guys are tied down.
Okay. The fourth priority was the Birmingham Park Master Plan. Again, we have to, I know the city has never adopted a plan for this park. There was a plan that was created roughly five years ago, and it's time to revisit that, for the city to establish a future plan, to establish a cost estimate, and begin figuring out how we will develop that park in phases, or through some sort of bond program going forward. So, it's hard to anticipate that without having a plan, so that's a priority, to get a plan on the book, so we can begin moving forward with that property.
In terms of the cost of that plan, it strikes me as low, knowing some of the costs that have gone into other plans and things. Any thought process is that...
Well, a lot of the preliminaries have already been done with the original plan that was done.
Right, so leveraging the topos and a lot of that that was done.
Yes, yeah, a lot of the preliminaries are there and won't have changed much in the last five years.
Right, so it's leveraging that which was done, not necessarily the plan, but a lot of that background information.
Correct, correct. That's, that's not having to start from scratch, basically.
Right, okay, so it's not necessarily using those plans, maybe using some of them, but...
Right.
Okay.
Using what we want of those plans, yes, to move us forward.
But, still having a fully vetted public process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The fifth priority was a Parks and Recreation 15-year comprehensive plan. Basically, what we're working off of now, what we're talking through now, is a one-year capital plan. The advisory board has set a specially called meeting for September to review what I've put together for a three-year plan right now, which is what I'm considering short-term. But, to do a long-term comprehensive plan, we're going to need to bring in an outside firm that can tell us where we need to be in the next 15 years, and so that's what that represents. The sixth priority was a trail plan update, basically taking what we have, it's been three years, there's been some changes, as Carter, I think, mentioned earlier, even the North Fulton Transportation Plan has made some changes which impact some of the trail plan here. There's been some staff suggestions for some input to make things congruent among a variety of plans that are in place. So, that would basically just take the plan that we have and update it, and bring it up-to-date with any changes or any other plans that have gone on in the last three years since its creation. And I think we're at a point where, because we know things don't match up, it's hard to say, yes, let's go implement the plan, when we know there are still questions about the plan. So, by doing an update, then we can move forward with the implementation, and have resolved a lot of those issues. Which brings me to the number seven, which is the trail plan implementation. And a large amount of money went into that. $300,000 came from the Trails Fund that we have, and then the other $700,000 came from our capital account. The number eight priority was the Crab Apple Crossing Potential Park Partnership. We've been talking with the principal at Crab Apple Crossing Elementary, and with representatives from Fulton County. There's two acres between Northwestern Middle School and Crab Apple Crossing that Fulton County does not have funds to develop, so basically, it's going to continue to sit there as is, unless someone comes along and has an idea to develop it. Carter and I have been working on a site plan for the park that would allow us to develop the park. It would be a nice, roughly two-acre neighborhood park, with some nice amenities for the neighborhoods to use in that area, as well as for the schools to use, for its needs, for its older age groups. Right now, the older age groups do not have a place to play for their outdoor time, and so this would allow them a place to go. After school hours, we'd be able to use the large open green space area for programs, practices, and such, so...
When you say older age group...
Fourth and fifth grade.
Fourth and fifth.
Mm-hmm. Right now, they play, if you're familiar with the layout of the school, there's a little cul-de-sac at the rear of the parking lot, that's where they play basketball, and...
Right, no...
So, they're on asphalt, and it's, it can become...
When I said older, because it's sandwiched between that and the middle school, and the middle school students, you know, you've got sixth graders that aren't too far from fifth graders, so hopefully, we'd be looking at age groups of the...
Right, I mean, both schools could use, I had not met with Northwestern about the potential project.
And that would just be a suggestion, is to really try to reach out, and we talked about that, we can...
What we put on the site would appeal to middle schoolers, as well as, as elementary school.
And is there any thought to use in the existing house that's there, or does this contemplate taking that down?
It takes it down.
And, I don't know what condition it is inside or out, the only reason for the question is, to your point about older age groups, I would just say that sometimes, especially in inclement weather, if you had a place where kids, after school, could gather for a positive activity, if that structure offered that...
Right. The new, the new site plan that we've put together includes a 35-foot pavilion.
So, during the winter, I guess, there's not much opportunity to use it, but, just a...
The house has asbestos.
Yeah, it's, it's got some asbestos.
Oh, that's all you had to say.
But, separate from asbestos, I guess my, my question with that, and we can have a separate discussion, would be, rather than a pavilion, obviously, that would increase the cost, but just, if not there, are there some other opportunities for after-school programs, either where we're leveraging, maybe even the school locations, to give some positive activities that could be Parks and Rec related, but not necessarily outdoors?
Right, yes, that we would use our IGA with the schools for that.
Inside the schools, the capital...
Yes, and we, we pay for the use inside the schools.
Okay, terrific.
And that's included in the lease fees.
Good, it's not just outside facilities?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, we have money set aside in this budget for the lease fees for indoor use.
Terrific, thank you.
The ninth priority was Crab Apple Community Center, which we allocated $40,000. The Parks and Rec Board is still unanimous in their support of taking the building down, and creating a nice passive park element there in Crab Apple. This $40,000 would make the improvements we would need on, on the site by taking down the house. So, that's where the thinking came from, that is, this, this money includes the demo for the house.
I'm going to ask a question, may I? May I, Carter?
If it doesn't get too detailed.
It's just that, knowing that we've got a historic preservation plan that was just put in place, and we've heard from several citizens, including some business people there in Crab Apple, that have asked that we look at that as a historic structure, I just would hope that the first thing out of the gate is that we at least discuss, rather than demolish a historic structure, that we think about how that either is consistent or inconsistent with the historic preservation ordinance that we just passed.
Right, that's why it's priority number nine.
And I think that's understood, and for another realm.
Yeah, that's why they put it at the, kind of the bottom of the priority list, is because if, if more time needs to pass before everybody's comfortable with whatever decision the city makes, we wanted to make sure we had money allocated for a project there.
Right.
Even if the city decides to keep the building, we have $40,000 allocated for renovation.
To do something. And again, just a final comment on that, would be that, obviously, we're going to have a commission in place for historic preservation, just hopefully, we'll engage them.
Right. The number 10 priority was the Park Sign Program. This is where, hopefully, once we have some of these facilities up, renovated, open to the public, we'll create some nice park signage, using the space signs that we have now, but encapsulating them in stone, or something, as was identified when we did the assessment plan and the pattern book, is to make our entrances in our properties look nice. plan in the pattern book, is to make our entrances in our properties look nice, have a milking feel to it, as well as this would allow from some directionals. Right now, there are no directionals anywhere in the city getting people to our parks. I have people calling me every day telling me they had no idea we had Bell Memorial Park and they have no idea where it is. So that would allow us to have some directional throughout the city as well as some onsite signage improvements, once we make these renovations.
Does this contemplate doing a comprehensive plan for signage for the entire city?
I can say that our office has been looking into some updates to the sign ordinance, which do include directionals. Currently, we were focusing on directionals that would be as part of a larger development and a comprehensive sign plan for that development, not necessarily for city owned properties only, but that's an aspect that we could consider as well.
Right, and what comes to mind most recently, we've been working over, Decatur's adopted a comprehensive city wayfinding identification program there. It's pretty attractive. It's, it really sets the tone and the image of the city. If there's, we can find in the future that we can fund it somehow, I'd like to see something, I'd like to see us move forward in that program.
We'll look into that as far as, okay, thank you.
Taking into mind, you know, what we're going to do with this sign program at this time.
Good idea.
I know we discussed the possibility of trying to purchase some type of property somewhere on Deerfield Highway 9 area for pocket parks and stuff. I don't see that anywhere in here.
That's, those were not given priority numbers. Those are still lumped in to the overall park improvements, land acquisition number. I have it on my spreadsheet, but-
Okay, so that's still part of the 441,000?
I'm showing 490 left. No, sorry.
Should be a little under 400,000 left.
330 left. I did my math right.
I don't know how much we can say out here, but didn't we talk about MARTA funds for that?
I think we talked about using some of it for actually development of it and some of the land purchase there.
Yeah, you're right.
A share, and that's still, we can still talk about that, but the rest of the money should be set aside for potential land acquisition or contingency, should some of these numbers be a little under where they need to be.
So it's captured?
Yes, it's still in capital, it's still there.
I just want to make sure it hadn't gone away.
It's still plans to be expended, but with the land acquisition-
And it's not presuming that that would use 100% of that for land acquisition for that one?
Oh, no, 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 there's a couple in there that if they become available, that's why they weren't given a priority number, if they become available, we're going to try to get them as soon as possible. So, but with that being an executive session discussion, I didn't want to give too much detail about that.
Okay, I think, Julie, one more quick question on this one.
Two quick thoughts, is that one in Bell Memorial Park, just, I didn't hear anything about that house that's on that parkland, and especially in this off-season when that doesn't get utilized, I'd like us to at least consider how we can utilize not only Bell Memorial Park, other than for baseball, when of course, baseball's not being utilized in that field or those fields, but also how we might utilize the house that's there.
I think we have some limitations because it's not set up to be a public structure. It wouldn't come into compliance with some of the regulations if we were to have public gatherings and such there. We'd have to make some major modifications to the building to bring it into compliance.
And so I don't know what those are, but maybe separate from tonight, obviously, we could at least understand why, what those constraints are, because it is a place that I think gets underutilized, separate from baseball, I just think it gets underutilized as a park.
One of the things outlined in the description for the improvements is a look at the Bennett House to see if there's a way for us to make improvements to it.
Because I think that would make some sense.
Make it more functional, even if it's for storage for the city or-
For a whole host of possible things, right.
Yeah, it's on my list, but-
Okay, and I just didn't see that, so I'm glad you did, that's on your list. And then the other was with regards to the trail plan, with a million dollars, do we have a sense of how much trail that would get us in 2011?
It depends on where and what material you're talking about.
So at this point, it's just allocating the dollars, really not any estimates behind it?
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we had enough to work with.
All right, I think that pretty much covers Parks and Rec. Ease on in the community development, if that's the way you want to go, Chris?
Yeah, let's go community development, we'll do this one quickly and lay the thing away. I'm getting tired, I'm sorry, y'all.
That's all right.
We'll start off, again, I'll make it as quickly as I can, as quick as I can, excuse me. The Arnold Mill Master Plan, basically, we've just adjusted the total request, reduced it down a little bit. I think the original request had some marketing studies in it, which I don't think that we intend to do based on the CPAC discussion thus far. Comprehensive plan, we adjusted that down. We feel like we're going to be pretty close to having that done, at least to submit to DCA. Our goal is to have that done by the 20th, for you all to approve and submit to DCA. And we think that we can get that done with just a minimal amount of money left over to maybe complete or tweak the financial model, so.
That's not the 20th of August.
No, 20th of December, what did I say? I'm sorry.
You just said 20th.
20th of December, which just gets it in this year, so that was my goal. We'll see if we can hit that one. Skipping on down, you'll see that the Highway 9 Master Plan, CPAC is also recommending a master plan for Highway 9 area. This would be a master development and redevelopment plan, because obviously, a lot of that area is already developed. So we have budgeted 80,000 for that plan. Just below that, you'll see an impact feasibility study, which has moved into year two, which is fiscal year 2012. So we are looking towards putting together a feasibility study to see even if that's reasonable for us at this time. And we've tentatively budgeted 80,000 for that. Very last thing on the list, and I'm sure one that everyone will be excited to hear about, is TDRs. CPAC has also got that as one of the number one priorities in the comprehensive plan. So we're looking at a feasibility study with a potential ordinance for $75,000. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I thought we had in the budget a update to the Crab Apple Master Plan, where is?
That was originally in the budget for this past year, I believe, and let me see if I can find that on this list.
A lot of that's likely captured in mayor council and city hall.
Yes, and that's exactly what we had discussed during our-
I don't think, I think an update to the Crab Apple Master Plan is very different from city hall.
We can call it something different, but that's where the dollars would be captured.
Because the Crab Apple Master Plan talks, I mean, it's-
There was 25,000 in the plan, as it was currently budgeted.
Yeah, I'd like to say it's specifically listed out, because it is an update to Crab Apple Master Plan is-
Okay, so let's just make update to Crab Apple Master Plan, 25,000, city hall 175.
And would that be consistent when with, again, you may not have the answer tonight, but I'm assuming that that would need to be consistent with what CPAC's recommendations are?
As far as Crab Apple specifically goes, I believe that they are recommending a revisit of the master plan. How in-depth that revisit is, I can't tell you at this point.
But that might help determine, is 25,000 number, is it, does it need more, you know, whatever? But hopefully, you could maybe coordinate before we have that next budget discussion.
Anybody else have any questions on this section? Moving on.
All right, take the tab, this is capital grant fund for me, and just flip to that. We won't spend a lot of time here, but what I want to just bring to your attention is that the capital grants, there is funding in here for the intersection projects that are ongoing. We've got city funding for Mayfield and Mid-Allwell Intersection Opportunity, Lovable Centers Initiative, there's some city funding, and Georgia Urban Forestry Grant. Capital grant fund request at this point is 238,240 for this fiscal year. If we can get into more detail on any of, or all of those, I think what we want to make sure is we have the right funding set aside so that we can-
Go after those. You're talking about capital grant funds. What's the LCI funds?
The LCI funds are a joint project with Alpharetta. We're trying to get an LCI project for the area immediately adjoining 400 that's in the city of Milton. This is a grant that I think we applied for last year and were denied, but we applied for our belief separately. And so we're going to try for, to apply for jointly.
Haven't had that money yet, that's a hopeful.
Right.
That's right. Last year, we talked about what they would be interested in seeing with funding in the form of the LCI, because we've applied for two now on our own, we've applied for Highway 9, we've applied for Crab Apple, and we've gotten shot down in both of them. So what they indicated they would be willing to see last year, and probably would look seriously at funding, was a joint LCI application that encompassed the area of Winward Parkway from 400 to Highway 9, and then extending up Highway 9 into the city of Milton. But they would only be interested in looking at that if it's a joint requirement between Milton and Alpharetta. Last year, I tried to get Alpharetta to play, and we didn't have success last year, but we didn't have success last year with the comment that I got last year from Dieter Rither, which was, let's do that next year, Chris. So that's what the notion is this year, is that we would have a joint application. And if you can kind of picture a bubble just moving, what they're interested in is the flow from 400 west on Winward Parkway up into Milton on Highway 9. And we can't do that one alone, because the bulk of the, Winward is Alpharetta, Alka 9 is us. So if we have any chance of LCI funded this year, it's going to be in a joint application.
And can we keep our eyes open too, for possible grants to work with Roswell on the Arnold Mill Master Plan, because that has got to be done with Roswell. I mean, there's no way that plan can be done by itself, not when you change jurisdictions seven times, heading south in a matter of three miles. There's people there that don't even know what city they live in, plus us.
And too, I think that we'll have similar thoughts about character and being able to do something that has a similar mindset. And along those lines, when it comes to the trail update process, Cindy, just knowing how much Roswell's committed to trails, and knowing that 140 is going to take on eventually widening, et cetera, but being able to capture that within the master plan, because that would give us an opportunity to connect potentially even to the Roswell Park system.
All right. Does that kind of get us where we need to be for this evening on the budget?
Not quite, but I'm about to get there really close. Let me jump ahead real quick and say, the budget that you have presented to you tonight is what is going to be distributed in first presentation next week, partly because we need to get a first public hearing and a first brief. That will occur one week from tonight at the regularly scheduled council meeting. I would like to, it's based on, I kind of spend the notes back and forth here, I would like to offer to you that the following Monday, which is typically an off week for us, although we have it on our budget calendar, is an option for a second budget workshop. Think we're probably going to need that, okay? And I think what we accomplish between now and then is number one, get this thing read the first time, number two, give y'all the window of opportunity you need to have to be able to ask the questions that you want to ask. But I think we're going to need one more work session before we get this thing adopted.
Is that the 30th, maybe?
23rd.
The 23rd, okay, down.
And then we will move towards either an adoption at the first or second meeting in September. So just kind of want to lay out the process for you. But even though you see this is what's going to appear in the packet, and this is what we're going to ask you to vote on in first presentation, I don't think we're that far off. I think it's going to get a good bit tweaky, but I don't think we're that far off. But that at least gets a public hearing.
Gets the ball rolling on that end.
Yes. So I'm going to summarize just a couple of the things you might want to leave and ask questions about in the maintenance and operating budget. First of those, and these are the things I want you to think of particularly for next week, I'll ask you the question, how important is it that we print and mail the annual report this year? This budget continues to have that funded in it. We've seen a lot of governments in a tight economy go to a completely electronic-based annual report, electronic communication with citizens, although I know we've always enjoyed doing the nice annual report and making sure it ended up in everybody's mailbox. So I'm split on that. I could go either way, I could argue for either side.
How much was it last year?
It was 14,000.
It's 21,000. Print and mail is 21,000.
I think we end up with a lot of extra copies that don't-
Right, we've never seen that cost before, because the production and printing of it in all years prior has been a portion of a lump sum contract. So what we've seen is just the mailing cost. So this year, we know now what the cost of it is, 21,000 should do both.
And we feel like that's a reasonable cost? I don't mean that the cost is reasonable, but based on-
If we go to all 11,500.
I send it to them every month, for the next month electronically, on an email.
All right, good. So that kind of answers that question. You'll see as you go through here, look at the MNO budget close, there's some things that we have put in there, particularly look at the finance department. This is going to be the first year that I believe that we need to employ the services of a financial advisor. That's just something that we've needed to do, and now we're in the right year to do that. That's the person that will help us through a bond rating, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that type of stuff. We're the last of the cities in North Fulton County to actually go out and solicit that service. Probably some of you are going to wonder, what happened to our benefit costs this year, particularly related around health insurance? We have our first bid in, our first quote in from our current provider, which is United Healthcare. Compared to what the industry is averaging, I guess we fared okay, but we have still realized an 18% increase in the cost of healthcare. That's 50% of the cost of the increase that we received last year in the cost of healthcare. We were in the mid-30% last year, if you remember when we were going through the budgets. If there's any benefit here, it's that some of the internal things that we put in place as far as employee training, et cetera, have appeared to pay off, even though we're still seeing an increase in the cost of healthcare. We're shopping the market, but to give you some idea, that is what healthcare has cost. And I'm not sitting here tonight to tell you that I think we can just hide that whole 18% in budget somewhere and not have an impact to the employee. So you will see that it's kind of a shared impact in the budget as you work through that, and I can explain better detail when you want that.
But you're still taking quotes on that?
We are.
So if anyone wanted to get you a quote, they could?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Up until when? When's the renewal?
Tomorrow, no.
Midnight tomorrow.
I guess already tomorrow.
When would we need that, bud?
The series better. We just need to get whoever's consistent that we have available, and they can work with that. We have some stay on everybody. Would help that our road is going to have something for the next week, two weeks. So we can pledge as much as we can, so you're like, hold on, okay.
So when's the renewal data?
October 1. We need to go through a enrollment sometime in September. So add all that, and we'll have that.
Six weeks.
The other thing that's included in here is, we asked ourselves the question, what do we do with employees this year? Do we look at a cost of living adjustment, do we not? Do we try to keep up with inflation, do we not? I don't think we can keep up with inflation this year. Inflation runs somewhere about 3%. In looking at the budget, every one and a half of a percent that we would look towards any type of a cost of living adjustment for employees, every one and a half percent costs $33,000, to give you an idea. We have funded over the last two years, we did a 2.5% last year, a 2.5% the year before that. What's included in this budget is 2% in a cost of living adjustment. There's difference amongst cities around us, we recognize that the costs of retaining people are sometimes cheaper than the costs of recruiting new people. So when we do that, we try to look at what other folks are doing. Alpharetta looked at a cost of living adjustment of 2% at mid-year in their budget. Johns Creek was very generous in their raises to employees. Roswell didn't do any type of a cost of living adjustment and no pay for performance. So you can see it spans the spectrum. There's folks that are doing a lot, there's folks that are doing a little, and there's folks that are doing none. I kind of have us right in the middle category of doing a little. And ultimately, that'll be a decision that we'll have to make in this budget process. What exactly, what exactly, if anything, do we want to do for- what exactly, what exactly, if anything, do we want to do for cost of living adjustments with employees? Again, I can argue both sides of the fence there, as to what the right thing to do is. I truly believe that we have an excellent employee base, and I think that the costs of retaining good employees are cheaper than the costs of recruiting new ones, and I think some demonstration of at least trying to keep up with what it costs to live is probably the right thing to do. I certainly am open to your comments or suggestions on that. All right, I think that's the notes I have here, that are just kinda questions I thought you might have. Go through the maintenance operating budget, you'll see it's a line-by-line budget, we don't have to do every line by line here publicly. If you have questions, I would welcome, and I'll say this, please hear this loud and clear, I would welcome your questions, and I would welcome them anytime between now and two weeks from now. We have a much better chance of responding to your questions if we have them and have a little bit, a little bit of time to respond to them.
Would you like those electronically, would that be the best?
That would be very helpful. The more we can get ahead of the game, the next time we won't have to be here till 10:00.
And if we just sent it to you and Stacy, when you respond, do you respond to everybody with the answers, so that we'll know?
Yes, I'll absolutely do that.
Okay, but we'll just copy just the two of you initially?
And that would maybe, if you ask questions tomorrow, and we respond to everybody, and that may answer Bill's questions the day after.
Chris, in anticipation of that added work session, do you think that the duration of that work session would justify an additional meeting, or could it not be a tack on to the zoning meeting in two weeks?
16th looks pretty long.
16th long.
Yeah.
Yeah, next Monday night is a pretty long meeting, and I'm gonna ask, and I'm gonna ask if we can make it even longer, because we really still have one more agenda item tonight, which I don't know if anybody has looked at faces, I don't know if anybody's ready to go till midnight. If you are, we're ready to go.
Does this not even take two hours?
Oh, yeah, but no, I don't mean it'll take two hours, but it'll, this probably will generate some discussion. We're ready to move forward, if y'all wanna move forward, if you wanna push this to a published staff report a week from tonight, I can do that, too, that's just, it's your pleasure.
I would prefer to push it, but I'll yield to the majority.
I would too.
Can I ask, like, just a three minutes, for a three-minute summary that at least gives us a sense of what your thinking is?
They gave us this.
Yeah, I see this, but I also see ordinances, and I see some things...
We can do it if we all...
Is it gonna be as late on the 16th? I mean, is it 10 o'clock now, or 10 o'clock on the 16th?
Again, I would prefer to push it, myself.
My question, though, is just, are we gonna end up on the 16th saying that it's 10 o'clock, and we can't have, don't have time to discuss it? Because this stuff is important.
I cannot predict when the meeting on the 16th will end. We, I don't know what the length of that one's gonna be. This presentation was the presentation that we brought forward as a follow-up to the retreat that we had at GMA, where one of the priorities of the council was one that we liked not to discuss, and I said, "Please let staff take an attempt at looking at it, and let us bring some ideas to you." There's nothing in here that is going to require immediate action, meaning, you know, there's not anything that we would not do tomorrow if we don't talk about it tonight, but...
I'll ask a couple of quick questions, then, just looking at this, so I'm better informed for the 16th. May I?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see the whole staff presentation, though, before I start to...
My question's pretty generic, it's not about a specific item, and I was planned to obviously discuss this tonight, but when I, this is the first one I've seen it, but as an example, some of these items, my question will be on the 16th, and before that, will be how do these compare and contrast to what's coming out of CPAC? Because already, just looking at this list, I think there's some things that we've already come out of some community meetings where people said they didn't wanna see this, such as small, well-defined commercial crossroads or conservation subdivisions. So those will be some of the things that I think are gonna be worthy of some in-depth discussion. So again, I'm not trying to take it down into those details, except for to say, how does this compare and contrast with what CPAC is saying? Because I think a lot of this stuff needs to dovetail or not dovetail, and then how does it compare and contrast to what came out of some of the community input that we've gotten multiples of times? Unless the definition of these are suddenly quite different.
And that's part of the reason that I anticipated this was gonna be a long agenda, because I anticipate those questions. I can tell you that what we have brought forward here, and what we'll also move into, are what the Planning Commission has recommended as their priority projects over the next couple of years, I guess. So I don't think there's anything that's in the staff report that has not been recommended as a priority project of the Planning Commission. It will take us a full staff report to be able to make this make sense.
Well, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with some of this stuff, so again, Planning Commission being one component, but then the other being CPAC, and I just would hope that we've got a way to dovetail some of this stuff. And then obviously, there's gonna be those things that are perhaps not, not that they're not a good idea for some places, but that may have some inconsistency with what we've heard from the community.
Perhaps so, but who's this, if, since we've got some of this information, if in the next few days, you had some questions that rose from it, we'd go ahead and get them to them, and maybe by the close of business Thursday, and then I'd give them a couple of days to try to get some of those answers together.
But I think that was less than three minutes, since this was on our agenda.
We'll do whatever y'all wanna do. If you want to push it, we'll push it if you want.
That's fine, I just, I hope that if we though get to a 10 o'clock, I mean, at some point, we gotta get it at the time.
We've gotta face it, well, yes, no, I agree completely, but if there are four of us at one, or whatever.
That's perfectly fine.
And I don't know if there is, I know I'm one.
I would prefer to wait, because I feel like it's very important, and I don't feel like we'll do it justice as time is on right now.
I don't think Councilperson Longoria?
I don't care either way.
Somebody's gotta make a decision.
Yeah, I don't care either way, but...
It's a tiebreaker, so I would like to move it on to the 16th meeting.
Let's review it, come up with some questions and negatives, probably.
All right, I guess that finishes us. Thank you. Good night, God bless you.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash.
So are we supposed to have an executive session?
We didn't have, we didn't have one on...
No, I just...
This isn't a meeting.
One of it. Is it something that needed to be discussed, though?